So.
That wasn't that long ago.
Well, just yeah, oh, by the way, by the way, uh, we should all shout mazel tov because today is my eightieth birthday.
Congratulations.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. It's so nice to see, you know, somebody, eightieth birthday, you're still working, you're coming out, so nice.
God's been very good to me.
Okay.
It is six, so we are live.
Jakey, are you there?
Is there sound? I can't hear anybody.
We hear you.
Ally, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can't hear you. Shoot, I gotta figure out what's wrong.
Can you hear anyone? No, that's not.
Ally. Ally, do you hear me?
Yes.
My only question is if Ellie Renner has leave five to seven, if we take a fifteen minute break and we could continue seven fifteen.
Yeah, I assume that's how we'll handle it.
If you're okay with that, I'll wait around.
Yeah, okay.
All right, now I can hear this computer.
Okay, we hear you, John.
I turn this one.
John, you have two cameras on? I don't, I don't, we don't hear you. I don't hear you.
I always do a backup.
I'm Adam, how are you? Not as good as Ron, smoking a cigar, you know? They should have both party favors for everybody.
Hard to do that at a virtual meeting.
I'm celebrating today. Mr. Pfeffer, I'm smoking a sort of DBL Maduro by.
Almonte.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Adam, I can already tell that you're, you're echoing, so just make sure you mute when you're not talking like you are. John, you too.
Yeah, I, I have, the persons should be locked down to help you.
Okay, Ally, I just saw Mr. Stern. Okay, I think we're gonna have to mute everybody and see, okay, now it's okay. Uh, Mr. Stern, yeah, I see.
Here, yep, I'm gonna be eating my dinner, so I'm taking off video, not to be rude.
Okay, or you could share with all of us, then you won't be rude.
No, I cannot. No virtual burgers, sorry.
Okay, I, I would like to start the meeting, I think we have, Ally, just let's confirm that we have, we have Dave, Mr. Stern, me, uh, Jacob, Jacob Myers here, and Mr. Renner, so we have five, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so. I will call them, I will call the meeting to order. Let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Ally, can you please read in the certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable, Mr. Flansbrough, Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Ratzek, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Ackerman.
Okay, swearing in of professionals.
Mr. Vogt, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before this war over the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, we're gonna go on to the public hearing. I just wanna announce to the public, we have right now a quorum, which hopefully will be around till seven o'clock, and Mr. Renner may have to leave early. We do have Mr. Sable coming in around seven fifteen. If Mr. Renner has to leave early, I will call for a recess for fifty minutes until we have a quorum again. We would like to accommodate as many applications as we can. So I will round everybody else closer. Saying that, Ally, is there any changes to the public agenda?
Uh, we do have one change. I received a request from Heyda Benet Tora, which is listed seventh on tonight, to carry this application to the July sixth public hearing, so I would recommend that that announcement be made.
Okay, so Jackson.
Yes, members of the public, members of the public, be advised, number seven on tonight's calendar, SB twenty-three fifty-seven AA, Shetter Benit Tora, six twelve Madison Avenue, has been adjourned and will be heard on Ju- July sixth, two thousand twenty-one, six o'clock, uh, in this, uh, virtual format. There will be no further notices.
Okay, now going back to number one, Ally, I think the applicants wanna push it off to next week, I think. Mr. Pfeffer's here.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, attorney on behalf of Vino Stavora. Um, that's correct, uh, we've been working with, um, the neighboring property. Uh, I believe we've, we've basically resolved it, but I wanna make sure we have it all, uh, written out properly so the board can see it, um, and then complete the application at the next week's meeting.
Okay, you, you'll, you'll have everything ready by next week?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just make our, a big meeting even bigger next time, next week. Okay, so you wanna announce it? Will be a continuation. Basically, we heard this whole application. We just have to open it up to the public again and, and read the agreement into the record. I think that's all we have to do. Is that correct, Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes, we, we, we will put into the record what the agreement is and what, and if, what if any changes, um, are being made to what was already provided to the board. Um, and then obviously the board will have time to comment and then allow the public to speak, um, for any, um, issues that may arise.
Okay, so it's a continuation, whatever I should know. Uh, so, Mr. Jackson, you wanna announce it?
What will be the, uh, date, Mr. Herzl?
June twenty-second.
Six twenty-two. Members of the public, be advised, number one on tonight's public hearing calendar, SB twenty-four nineteen, Benos Tavora, has been adjourned until June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, six o'clock, in this, uh, electronic, uh, media platform. There will be no further notices.
Okay. It leaves us with four applications, let's see if we can get through it. Okay, so.
We wave, the applicant waves any time, restreins.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's record also reflect that Mr. Sable has joined, um, by phone, so he is at least listening in for the moment.
Okay, so, Ally, on to number two, you wanna announce it?
First application for tonight is gonna be SB twenty-four sixteen for six fifty James Street. It's a major site plan for an office building.
Okay, Terry, when you're ready, you go through your report. Thank you, Ally, for bringing it up. Terry? See muted?
Somebody muted me, I'm sorry, Chairman.
Okay, so you can go when you're ready.
All right, I'm reading from our June first review, uh, beginning at the top of page three. Um, under submission waivers, we have listed, uh, topo contours and man-made features, features within two hundred feet, as well as EIS. Uh, we support the waivers, uh, for hearing purposes.
Okay, so we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendations to grant the waivers. Who's that, Mr. Renner?
I'll move it, yeah, Mr. Senator.
Okay, and who, who seconded? Oh, Mr. Meyer? Okay, second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh, on to.
Continuing on under zoning, under Roman numeral two on page three, uh, two variances that are related to pre-existing conditions, uh, lot area variance as well as lot width. And finally, under design waivers, uh, a design waivers required with regard to the buffer, the buffering requirements, uh, in eighteen dash eight oh three of the UDO, um, as indicated in our review, uh, the applicant's engineer, uh, intends to provide, um, a comprehensive landscape design, including buffer planning, uh, in support of the waiver. And that's all to relieve, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, who's the attorney on this application?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant six fifty James LLC. Uh, applicant is seeking, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a ten thousand four hundred and forty square foot office building on the subject property. Um, you will note, um, as Terry indicated, the variances associated with the application are all for existing conditions. In addition, the applicant is extending sewer service to the site in order to build the building, which is a tremendous, tremendous asset to the neighborhood. We're also always looking for commercial ratables, this is a commercial ratable that replaces some dilapidated commercial structures that are currently located on the property. But with that introduction, I'm gonna call upon Brian Flannery and ask that he be sworn.
Okay, Mr. Flannery?
Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm testimony you'll give before this war over the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, as Miriam indicates, this is an application for a, uh, office building on a two point three acre site on James Street. Uh, the property has an existing business on the site, which, uh, Ms. Weinstein referred to as, uh, dilapidated structures. It was an old residential house, uh, and I knew it quite well because my property backed up to James Street and, and they used to have decorations up on the holidays. It was, it was a very nice residential house. It switched to a, uh, a commercial use, which is Modi's Car Store, and he does car repairs. And, uh, just a plug for Modi, he does very fine, uh, car repair work, but he's not gonna be there any longer. The, uh, the site, um, i- is virtually conforming. Uh, we're asking for, uh, variances for the existing conditions on lot size. Uh, as indicated in Terry's report on page three, the, uh, it's in the M one zone and, uh, all these buildings are permitted use. Uh, the lot area required in the M one is three acres. It's an existing lot with two point three one acres, and it's developed on all three sides. Uh, the minimum lot width variance, again, in the M one zone, um, three hundred feet is required. It's a hundred ninety-four point three five, and again, it's developed, uh, on, on all three sides, the, the both sides and the rear. Uh, so there's, uh, nothing that can be done with respect to that. Uh, the, the justification for the variances, uh, which, in my opinion, is very, uh, simple. In this case, it's, it's an existing site with an existing use which is being improved. The master plan of two thousand and seventeen, the vision statement, uh, on page seven says, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. Certainly, it's, it's my testimony that this does this. It provides an excellent ratable for the township, the municipal angus law. Uh, uh, in this case, we're C one variance. Normally, we're talking about C two variances where the benefits outweigh the detriment. This is clearly a C one variance because it's an existing lot with, uh, nothing that, that can be done with respect to it. Uh, so certainly my testimony is that, uh, these, uh, this relief can be granted without any substantial detriment to public good and will not substantially impair the intended purpose.
Is there any variance on parking?
No, the parking, uh, we're providing parking in excess of what's required. Uh, it's, the parking is required at one per, uh, two hundred and fifty, uh, square feet, uh, based on the new ordinance, a- and we're exceeding that. A hundred and twenty-five is required, we're providing a hundred and fifty-five.
Okay, and, and there's, you baking sidewalks around the, on the, on the end?
We have sidewalks along the, uh, property frontage, but we don't have sidewalks from, uh, James Street to, uh, the, the, the building. Uh, we have a parking line in front of him behind the building, and, and we feel that, uh, the way the site is laid out, it, it provides adequate pedestrian circulation, uh, and, and that would not be needed. So, uh, going through, uh, the other items in, in Terry's report.
Where's the garbage?
Uh, there's a, uh, garbage dumpster in the rear of the property, and it, and it will be private pickup.
Okay.
Um, the ar- architectural plans were submitted. It's a three-story beautiful building. And, and a- again, it'll, it'll be in, in, uh, a very nice rate of the township. Uh, Terry asked for testimony on some truck, some, some of the things, and, and certainly we could, as part of resolution compliance, comply with.
Is, is there anything from Terry's report that you cannot agree to?
Uh, the, the, on, on page five, with respect to the sidewalk from James Street, the applicant would prefer not to connect the sidewalk to James Street. We feel that the people coming to the office building are gonna be driving, we've provided more than enough parking, uh, and, and it's typical access from the park.
Around the building. One second, Dave, around the building, you do have sidewalks.
That is correct.
Okay, Dave.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Builder, uh, will they agree that if three sixty, block three sixty-six or three sixty-four were developed and sidewalks went in, at that time, would he put them in?
Well, we're putting sidewalks along our frontage, so there will be sidewalks.
Along James Street.
Yes.
He's putting regular sidewalks.
Along James Street.
Yes.
James Street. Would develop, sidewalks went in, would the builder go on that, go in now and say he will build also?
Well, we don't feel there's a need for sidewalk, uh, from James Street to the office building, because see, we anticipate the, the parking that's provided for the office building. People are gonna drive to the office, uh, and, and therefore they don't need that sidewalk. Uh, there, there, there is room for the sidewalk, as the board felt differently. Uh, and, and we, we would certainly agree to, uh, to crosswalks, uh, across all of the aisles, uh, heading up the building. But we're respectfully requesting, uh, not to have a, the, the one comment in his report, we're respect, request, respectfully requesting not to have to do that.
Yeah, I don't hear what the board has to say, but we definitely crosswalks all over, caution be gone with the.
And, and, and as part of resolution compliance, we, we would provide crosswalks to the satisfaction of the board engineer.
Okay, is there anything else in the report that you cannot agree to?
No.
Please, okay. Do any board members have any questions for Mr. Flannery?
Yeah.
So do. Once, Mr. Sable.
Go ahead, Ally, go ahead with your question first. Ally, go ahead with your question, please.
Okay, Ally, go first.
We're not getting sidewalks, we're not getting sidewalks.
Interior sidewalks from James Street going to the building, interior.
Ah, okay.
Okay, Mr. Sable.
Yeah, Brian, on, on the street, on James Street, is there parking permitted, or is there a car on, no parking, no standing?
No, there's, there's no parking on James Street.
Meaning there's no shoulder, or there's no, uh, not allowed? There are no standing sign or parking sign?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think.
There's no shoulder. I don't think you have room for parking there.
No, I, 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 I know from traveling that there's no room for the sidewalks. You get a little further down where the, the school was put in, there, there, there is some room for it, but right in that area, th- there's not room for it. The shoulder's not wide enough.
So we don't, so we don't think that anybody's gonna park on the, on the street and then have to walk through the entire parking lot?
No, and, and, and we provided thirty more parking spaces than are required for the ordinance, which was updated to change it from one per three hundred to one per two fifty. And, and we provided thirty more than that. So we feel there's plenty of parking. The, the, the applicant Rabbi Schwartz, uh, is familiar with the types of buildings and, and at the, uh, the tech meeting, we expressed our, uh, opinion that we feel they're not needed, and we would respectfully ask not to have them required.
Through, through the chair.
Yeah, Mr. Stern.
No, no, he's not, he's still talking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the sign. This property, this property is on the south, the north side of James.
Property is on the south side of James. Uh.
And what's the?
One, one lot from Cross Street.
Right, and what's the, this property goes all the way to Cross, or there's something else? Is the office building over there?
No, there's a, uh, a school building behind it.
Right, so you, I, I, I think it's gonna be a cross. I think it's gonna be, uh, uh, children using this, uh, side to walk through to the school, uh, avoiding going to the corner and going back.
Well, well, we would certainly discourage having schoolchildren walk through.
Yeah, I, I would, I would hope that the school is fenced in. I wouldn't want people going.
Can we, can we double check to make sure? If not, can the applicant put in a gate in the back?
Put in a gate so they can get through?
No, they shouldn't get through. I don't want students going through. Mr. Sable's right, one second.
One second, maybe we could make a sidewalk on one side where they can walk safely to the school and save time.
Well, that, that's gonna be a, uh, an insurance issue for the applicant to be having the people not associated with the site walking on the, on the, on his property. If he puts in a walk for them, now, now he, it's an attractive nuisance, and, and he's asking for a lawsuit. So it would certainly be my opinion that, that wouldn't be appropriate.
So we have to ensure that they actually don't walk, because if they are going to use it, then we have to make sure they're using it safely. If not, we have to make sure they're not gonna use it.
During, during resolution clock, compliance, we, we would be happy to satisfy, uh, the board engineer that, uh, that, that, the acts, pedestrian access across the site would be inhibited.
Okay, Mr. Stern now.
It's Jacob.
Jacob, see, Mr. Stern was waiting.
To the west of, to the west of this, of this application is not a school, um, closer to Cross Street. It's, it's a Verizon, uh, regional building.
Yes.
Verizon there, and the other side of the building is a, uh, I believe also is a warehouse.
It's a warehouse, yes.
So there's no.
And the kids don't walk through Verizon to get.
Right, and there's not, so there's no school in the vicinity of this, of this project.
The school, the school is along the back property line. And, and there is a retaining wall there, there's a big drop, it, it's not somewhere where anybody should be.
Girls' school back there.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm not worried about the girls', uh, elementary girls' school kids, uh, getting through.
Okay, Mr. Sable, uh, Mr. Stern, you had a question?
Yes, um, so is there a, is there one of those aerial maps that has the overlay? I didn't see in the package, and I saw something in Terry's letter, there's, there's not one. Is there one? I missed it.
Okay. Yeah, the client's gone by Samont's office, and, and, and he did not prepare an aerial. I, I'm sure Ally could pull up the, uh, the Google Earth if you, if you, uh, wanted to look at it.
I wouldn't mind.
It, it's just super helpful for future reference to see how, what are the adjacencies.
Uh, advise Mr. Samont to that.
Okay, while we're waiting for that, Brian, can you translate, um, how many parking stalls per thousand square feet of, of rentable square footage? Four per thousand or five?
The ordinance requires four per thousand, uh, and, and, and we've provided thirty more than that.
What does that equal? Help me out. Is that four point three?
Uh, and it's late in the day, so I'm gonna get my calculator in.
Please do. I don't do mental math past five either, so I'm with you. Ally, can you zoom in a little bit more while we're waiting? Okay, got it.
It, it's roughly one per two hundred or five per thousand.
Okay, that's, that's, uh, that's a nice, healthy ratio.
And, and one of the items in the report was to, uh, testify that it's non-medical, a- and the application states that, the plans state that, and my testimony is it's non-medical.
Okay, Brian, now that we see the, the buildings, the buildings don't look so up to date over there. That's, that's, that's correct.
Is an area map on the cover page?
I guess, Brian, my final question is, James Street at certain hours of the day is kind of a nightmare. Um, is there any thought, will there be a problem from people trying to take, uh, I guess it'd be going, uh, west to the left, if you will, looking at this map? Uh, you know, just kinda cutting across oncoming traffic, is there any concern there about creating a knot of traffic?
Well, I, I, I've been in that site, uh, often, because a- as I indicated, I, I get my car repairs done there. Uh, and, and you have three scenarios with the traffic there. You, you have the scenario where it's very busy, and, and then it backs up from Cross Street, uh, all the way to the site, and then they, with traffic stopped, you always find one nice guy to let you in. Uh, the, uh, the other scenarios are, there's very minimal traffic and it's no problem, and, and there's times where there's actually, uh, virtually no traffic. So the o- only time it's a real problem is, uh, and, and I don't think it's a problem, is when the traffic is backed up. Hopefully, uh, the county, uh, improves James Street, the intersection and Cross Street. Uh, and, and we don't have that back-up situation, but when it backs up, I, I've never had a problem with somebody because they're stopped. Uh, it, you usually have more of a problem if there's heavy traffic and it's flowing. Because of the traffic light, when it's heavy traffic, it's not flowing, it stops and it backs up.
So here's the problem, Brian, I'm trying to think of the timing. You know, each one of these individual decisions we're making on its own doesn't seem to be an issue, but when we start aggregating them. So an office building is a lot more dense than your good buddy, the car dude. So your buddy, the car dude, one guy coming out to take a left, you'll find that nice, that nice guy who's gonna let you in. But if everybody's getting off at five o'clock and they have to go pick up the little kidlets at Playgroup or whatever, you're gonna have a peak load. Wh- what is the traffic light at nine thirty AM on this street, and what is it like at like, let's say, five PM or three PM?
Well, this, this.
Both the peak loads are gonna be happening at the same time, that's my concern.
Well, typically Lakewood, the peak loads are offset because the peaks in Lakewood go more with the school traffic than the office traffic. And with an office, people get to know the traffic patterns and figure out ways. But more importantly, this is on a county road, James Street is a county road, so, uh, we need to get approval from the county engineer, and the county engineer looks at all the, uh, traffic data on the, uh, uh, what the, the trips generated are gonna be, what the, uh, the vehicles are gonna be. A- and if it would need a write-in and write-out only, the county engineer would require that. My professional opinion is that that would not be appropriate for here, and it's a permitted use, and it's a good ratable, and, uh, it's, uh, assuming that the county, with the traffic information, uh, we'll, we'll have an intersection and, uh, and access that works.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stern, if I, if I may offer, um, you know, I'm, I'm going to kind of, uh, comment on what Mr. Flannery said. You know, i- it's during the master plan that the, uh, ability of the roads to handle this kind of thing are discussed. Once the zoning is set, uh, the zoning contemplates that the use and the density and the concentration is appropriate for here, for here, and that, uh, balance has been struck. Um, you're absolutely right to comment upon that, but it should really, uh, be focused upon, you know, whether more, uh, amenities, uh, specific to the site are appropriate. Like, you know, where the driveway is in relation to the intersection, whether the driveway is wide enough, whether it should be left in, write out only, and those types of issues that, uh, relate to the regulation of traffic specific to this site. But the overall, um, density and intensity, et cetera, that, that's all been determined, uh, through the master plan process and the, and the governing bodies' adoption of the zoning ordinance.
No, a- and, and John, I don't disagree with you, but I guess the upshot of, of Brian's point and your concurrence is this planning board has no opinion on traffic, and we're supposed to ignore what we see as potential impact? I get it from an ordinance standpoint and a master plan standpoint, but I'm just, I'm just seeing, I'm visualizing this at nine thirty in the morning. The site, the, the kids are becoming, the bus are becoming, we got the stoplight, and all a hundred people are gonna be trying to get to work.
Well, like.
That's a hundred correct, accurate observation. I'm not, you know, I, I'm not saying that you shouldn't think of those things. I'm not saying it's not appropriate to comment on, but I just wanna say, you know, that, you know, this type of use is permitted there, but you can certainly take into account those considerations and, um, you know, wh- whether any variances are to be granted or any waivers or that kind of thing, um, you can. can, you can take that into account when, when you consider those issues.
Can I just interject for one, for one second? Cause our, our traffic, our traffic engineer, Mr. Kennel, is on and we can, we could get testimony from Mr. Kennel if the board would like to hear that.
We got you, let Mr., Mr. Stern continue, if you wanna call Mr. Kennel as a witness, uh, if it's necessary, we, we'll get to that.
I'll, I mean, listen, I, I'm not going to oppose this, I'm just, and, and I get John's point, uh, it just, it's this accumulation of these little decisions is gonna create more knots of traffic in Lakewood, and I don't know what to do about it, so I'm just, I'm venting to my colleagues.
Okay, thank you.
They're supposed to look at the traffic and a traffic report was submitted for this, uh, and, and the traffic report concludes that it, that it will function and, and Scott Kennel can give you a testimony.
And Dave?
Yes. Then if. Yeah, can I, uh, just put something in here?
Yes.
I'm sitting, uh, sitting on the county transportation advisory board, and as of now, the widening of, uh, Cross is only gonna come up to the railroad tracks and they're drawing the plans up, what they said to us, uh, from the railroad tracks up to, uh, Veterans Highway. We're trying to get them to fix the turn onto James Street, which they put on sort of a whole, the big problem there, as of now, are the 18-wheelers coming down from the mall, coming down from, uh, the businesses, and they have to jockey back and forth, and that's where the problems are. The big problem is they back up everything.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, any other board members have any questions? Yes, Mr. Renner?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, to, to make a comment based on what, you know, Mr. Jackson had said before, that at the time of, uh, the widening was at the time of the master plan.
Mr. Renner, you're breaking up.
Do you hear me now?
Yeah, speaking to the mic, now I hear you better.
Okay, I just wanted to, just regarding what Mr. Jackson has said, that the part that's, talk about the traffic and the widening of the roads, and those items are during the master plan, the planning board has tried doing that during the master plan, and Ocean, there was a, there was a judge that threw out, you know, tying the widening of James Street to the master plan, um, for certain changes in zoning. I don't know if it applies to all changes in zoning, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm just unsure what that, you know, decision did, but, um, obviously it doesn't work during the master plan. Now we have someone who's seeking a variance, I'm not saying I'm against this application either, but the idea that we shouldn't be discussing traffic when someone is seeking a variance on a specific application is wrong, we should, we should be looking at the traffic because apparently it didn't work during the master plan. Thank you.
Mr. Renner, I'm 100% in accord with you, when it comes to variances, uh, you can absolutely address that.
And, Mr. Jackson, this is existing variance, does that make any difference? They're not requesting any new variances.
Well, it's an expansion of a site with variances, you can deny it on the basis that, you know, it's, it's got variances and you don't wanna expand it. I'm not suggesting you do that, but you do have more, uh, latitude when it comes to variances, and I think it is correct to talk about the traffic. I just, I just wanted to comment on the idea that, you know, that, that the cut, that the death of a thousand cuts, when you, uh, that I think Mr. Stern was alluding to, it, you know, that, that balance was struck when the governing body adopts the zoning and they wanna see, you know, this type of use and this type of intensity, uh, go along this corridor. So, you know, the, the, the master plan is full, I'm sorry, the, the planning board, by approving these on a, you know, individual basis, is actually fulfilling that, that ultimate, um, direction that, that, that's in the ordinances.
Okay.
And additionally, it should be mentioned that we, we are providing additional right-of-way, we're widening the road in front of our frontage and we're, we're making a, uh, traffic improvement fee, uh, uh, payment to the county for widening other roads. So this applicant is certainly doing his fair share with respect to, uh, traffic on James Street.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Stern?
So I'm gonna defer to the chair about whether we should move on. I personally would love to hear a five-minute presentation from Mr. Caneely. Again, I'm not opposing this application, I'm gonna vote for this application, but I would like to hear what his analysis was.
Mr. Mr. Kennel, uh, Mr. Kennel, Scott, are you there?
Yes, I am, Chairman.
Okay, can you be sworn in by Mr. Jack, Mr. Jackson?
Do you swear affirm the testimony you'll give before this program with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Scott Kennel, McDonough and Ray Associates, testifying as a traffic expert.
Good, uh, Mr. Kennel, you heard what the planning board's concerns was on the traffic over there, could you alleviate some of our concerns?
Yes, I, I, I think it's important to recognize that the access that's been presented here and has been conditionally approved by the county provides one driveway for ingress movements and one driveway for exit movements. The exit movement driveway is located as far to the east as possible or to maximize the distance from James Street. It's also important to recognize that the James Street intersection is gonna be improved as part of the Cross Street, um, corridor improvements. And with that, right now, I know as vehicles approach James Street, it's striped as one, some people use it as two, but it'll be restripped as two, uh, formal lanes, so they get full utility. That'll help the stacking or queuing from Cross Street. As Brian mentioned, we're also providing a dedication to the county that ultimately will allow them to have a, their master plan cross-section for James Street, specifically in this area, is to have one travel lane in each direction separated by a center left-turn lane. So in other words, left-turn movements can be made from James Street without impeding through traffic, um, movements. And then there will be a shoulder.
Oh, that's on James Street or on Cross?
That's on James Street, that's their, that's their master plan, uh, cross-section. So we've provided the right-of-way and widening, so that, that can be accommodated.
So it's really three lanes, it's three lanes, not four, it's three?
It's gonna be three, it's gonna be one travel lane in each direction with a centered left-turn lane.
That will help.
And as others, uh, developments come on board, that cross-section will be put in place and then that striping can be implemented. I mean, I'm aware of, there's an app, the Willbin application on the north side of James Street, opposite this site, that again, will help facilitate that county master plan through lane cross-section.
And in your, and your professional opinion, that will occur before Route 9 is widened?
Definitely, Route 9 is not.
Oh, yes, before Route 9 is widened, yes, yes.
I, I'm being facetious, okay, thank you very much, that gives me a teeny bit of comfort, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Okay, I would open up to the public right now. Ally, do we have any public comment on this application? Or Mr. Jackson?
Yes, we received one email from Moshe Zinas, he said to clarify, there is a sidewalk on James Street along the property frontage and in the parking lot in front of the building.
Yes, I think the answer is yes, Brian, right?
That is correct.
Okay, that answer, are there any more public comments?
No, that's all I received.
Okay, so we'll close it to the public, and I would ask for a motion on the, this application?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, was, we have Mr. Stern and Mr., and Dave, one move and one second, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner? Mr. Meyer? Thank you.
Okay, on to number three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next application is SP 2420 for Yeshiva Stolen Carlin, it's a school on West County Line Road.
Okay, uh, Ally, before, before we continue, are there any, is there any opposition to number three?
Um, hold on, no, I, I haven't received any emails on it.
Okay.
I have none.
Is it a fairly simple application to your estimation?
I don't recall.
I just wanna make sure Mr. Renner stays.
Yes, we have buffer, we have buffer variances only, it looks like.
Okay, no problem.
Straightforward.
Okay, so hopefully Mr. Renner could finish with this application.
Okay.
Just Terry? Uh, no, you have to leave?
We do have a quorum without him. We have Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Renner makes six.
Okay, Mr. Sable? Sable, are you still on?
I'm on, I'm on the stand now on the expressway, I don't think, I, I, I wanna sit if I can't see the actual plan, and I can't look at it while I'm driving, so I don't feel comfortable to be the fifth and to be the, uh, part of the quorum. Let it continue a little bit, that'll be great.
I think Mr. Renner hung up already.
It goes on night?
I, I can, if we wanna reconvene, we can reconvene in forty minutes, but I, I, I have to see the plan physically.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's probably not a good practice to have a board member who can't view the witnesses, um, and, and doesn't have a visual contact, I think that's, uh, you know, not, not ideal. You know, I know they can listen to the tape, the law allows them to read a transcript or listen to the tape, so, you know, I, I guess it's okay to just do it audibly.
Yeah, but he doesn't feel comfortable voting, so I have, I have a problem with that. I need, I will.
Mr. Chairman, why, I mean, if, if Chaim, if we have four people in favor of something and Chaim doesn't have a strong opinion to the contrary, he's gonna carry anyways, if Chaim could be there to be our quorum, then.
As long as Mr. Jackson says it's okay, I have no problem. The, the only way it's gonna work, all, all four vote another way, because.
That, that's up to what he, he feels comfortable with, and, and I only say that because, you know, I know, uh, under the rules, if a member does not hear, is not at a meeting, you can read the transcript, so if he can listen to everything, um, and, and he just wants to, uh, determine at the end of the case whether he wants to abstain or whether he wants to participate, but that's, that's Mr. Sable's choice, whatever he's comfortable with.
Yeah, but I'm saying, i- if we have three people voting affirmative, even if he abstains, it, it, it doesn't hurt it, right?
No, he can abstain, we still.
That's the point, but he helps us with the quorum.
You need five people for the quorum, Mr. Stern.
Otherwise, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have a, a.
Backlog.
A huge, ginormous backlog.
Okay, so Mr. Sable, do you mind staying on, listening, and if you wanna abstain when it comes to the vote, you can vote just to keep the quorum going?
I, I, I would, I would like to stay and I, I will stay if, if we agree that if, that before we make a vote, I will get a chance to actually look at, look at the plan and, and given a comment, a question of any professionals before we make a vote. So maybe if we finish, uh, talking about this application in five minutes, we will postpone a, a vote until I actually get to see the plan to make sure, specifically about sidewalks and parking.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Jackson, are you okay with that? Could we go through all the applications under the hands?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a reasonable combination, and I think Mr. Sable, if I could just, uh, re- restate what he's saying, is he wants to participate and he wants to deliberate and he wants his voice to be heard, he doesn't wanna, you know, just be a, uh, a ceremonial member, and, uh, he'll agree to listen now and then the vote will occur when he looks at the plans. I think that's, uh, you know, that's up to him, and I think if the other boards can respect that, the board members can respect that, that we.
I'm, I'm okay with it, but Mr. Jackson, uh, the vote is coming tonight, Mr. Sable said he'll be with, in front of a computer within an hour. He said about forty, forty-five minutes. Okay, so we can.
If the case takes forty-five minutes, that works.
And if it doesn't, we'll go on to the next and just take a vote, uh, when the hour comes up. Is that okay?
All right, let's see how it goes. Well, yeah, we're gonna have the same problem though on the next case.
So we'll, we'll put them both on hold until they can see the vote.
That, that, that's creative, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, no problem, so Terry, please go through the vote.
Mr. Chairman, this is Adam Fef, I, I just wanna be clear for the record, we have, we have five members who have called in, four of which have, have visual, uh, can be watching it visually, Mr. Sable said he's driving, um, and would like an opportunity to review, uh, in person, but at least see all the issues or any of the concerns he may have. Uh, my understanding is that that's gonna occur the next hour or so, um, on these applications, is that correct, but we still be looking to have a vote this evening?
Okay, I, I just got a text, so Mr. Renner will be back in about five minutes.
So can we just take a five, if that's the case, I, I mean, obviously.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, Mr. Herzl, could we possibly do the correspondence? Sure that, um, Mr. Sable sees the plans and it will take about five minutes?
Is that yours?
And I, I did look at.
It is mine and then I could get off.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you're not doing this as a, just a good, a, a good civic citizen. You got a, you got a dog in the game.
But I think it could help you also, cause it's about a five-minute item and I don't really think he needs to see the plans.
Okay.
Always looking out for the board, Miss Weinstein.
Mrs. Weinstein, you win.
Ah, thank you so much.
All right, this is SP 2289 for Yeshiva or Yehuda, it was a previous approval wherein the applicant had provided a fence to assuage a buffer variance request, um, at this time they're requesting to no longer provide the fence, I believe the property owner that is adjacent to the fence is now the same owner as this site, if I recall correctly.
Ally, nice use of the word assuage.
Hmm, thanks.
Very impressive.
Actually though, Ally, that was not my understanding of it.
That's the other one that we carried from tonight then, I apologize, I'll let Ms. Weinstein explain this one.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I, it's Miriam Weinstein on behalf of Yeshiva or Yehuda, um, this one actually, the resolution called for a six-foot vinyl white fence alongside adjoining Lot 1. The applicant is simply requesting to install an eight-foot chain link fence with green slats in it in lieu of the white vinyl fence. This is a boys' elementary school, and actually what they're finding is that the white vinyl fences are not that practical, practical for elementary school boys, they kick them, they fall down, um, and that they actually are installing a, a taller fence that would be the chain link with the slats that will blend in.
A stronger fence too. A stronger fence, a stronger fence than.
Actually, right, it's actually a stronger fence, um, it's definitely better with, you know, some, you know, some, uh, uh, I, I don't wanna call them wild, but, uh, you know, these, these elementary school boys, the.
Boys are boys.
That the boys, boys are boys, that's, that's the reason for the request, very simple.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify, Ms. Weinstein, you referenced only along Lot 1, i- is that correct, or is it also everywhere else that they're showing this six-foot vinyl fence?
Um, looking at the application that was made, it says along Lot 1, the question is if Mr. Lynes is on and maybe he can answer that, cause that's all I, that's all I know of. Is Mr. Lynes on?
Thing I, I would just find the board to consider is, uh, you know, I, I don't know what the adjoining neighborhood is, a lot of times the white vinyl is, is, uh, an attempt to have, uh, privacy.
Yeah, but they're putting in the green slats, you know, they have the same privacy.
With the slats in it, you have privacy and it's, it's taller, it's eight feet instead of six feet, so I think you have more privacy.
And Ms. Weinstein, you did provide notice for this, correct?
Um, I did not, but as far as I know, um, New Lines did.
Yes, I have proof of notice in the file, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and, and Mr. Jackson, my personal opinion is that the, the white vinyl fence may be very nice, they don't hold up, they break up, I have it in my synagogue, they fall apart after, after no time. Uh, chain link fence with the slats is gonna hold up for years to come.
I'll tell you, um, I'll just put this out there, I've seen, uh, they, they have like a, a, a very nice, like, uh, Greek grass fabric material that goes in there, it's like a little higher end, the green slats, I mean, they break and they pull out and they, they look awful after time too, but I've seen, it's almost like an astroturf material, uh, in some places, but the board may wanna consider that as, as a, a little sturdier, a little more long-lasting and a better, uh, aesthetic, but I'm just putting that out there for your consideration.
Okay, uh, do any board members have any comments? Okay, Terry, what's your professional opinion, what would be the best, uh, to put a fence for stu-, for kids, boys?
I think it's a reasonable request, Chairman, uh, I actually heard this a month or two ago about another school, uh, apparently if you're playing ball or if you're up against it, uh, you can crack the vinyl, it's not the first time I've heard it. Uh, we don't have any issue with regard to, um, the eight-foot chain link, uh, as long as you have something privacy. Um, I've seen the material John's talking about, uh, question.
Uh, question for Glenn, uh, do you think that your client would have an issue? If it's slats versus whatever?
Uh, I don't think they'd have an issue. I think they're pretty much the same cost. And, and I think you're right. Once the, once one breaks, the, yeah, the one next to it starts breaking, then you have a hole. You know, softball-sized hole or something, so.
But then it becomes a contest. You got young kids. And not in a good way.
I know that.
Okay. Uh, any board members have any questions? Seeing none, we have to open to the public?
Yes, but I did not receive any emails on this.
Okay, so I open to the public and I will close it to the public.
Unless there's any, unless there's any call.
Okay. Is everybody unmuted?
I think Kristen was going to handle that. I only see one, two, three phone numbers, I think.
Okay. Kristen, is everybody unmuted?
I see it going.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak on this application? Okay, we'll close it to the public. And I would ask for a motion on this correspondence.
Chaim Sable makes the most of the vote.
Okay, Mr. Sable moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Garfield, roll call.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer.
Okay, I, I just got a text that Mr. Renner is back. So.
I'm sorry, let me, let me just get Mr. Meyer's.
I'm sorry.
Ruling on that motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you said yes.
That's okay.
Okay, Mr. Renner, if you're there, please introduce, acknowledge. Mr. Renner. Okay, so he's not on.
He might be.
Chairman, I was just going to tell you, my idea was such a good one. He came back just as we finished.
Okay, I just got a text.
Thank you, goodnight.
I just got a text that he's back. Is anybody muted still?
Yeah, it's probably one of the phone numbers. They're muted on entry.
Okay, so can we unmute it and find out where Mr. Renner is?
Mr. Renner, say hello. They're all unmuted.
Okay. Because I, I think, I think we should continue and, uh, we'll wait for a vote until Mr. Sable can see the drawing. So Sable, you still there? I don't know if we have a quorum. I don't know. Okay, so Mr. Sable, okay, let's listen to the application and I'll hold off with, uh, if you don't feel comfortable, hold off until you can get to a computer and see the application, the, the plans, and before we make a motion. Okay, so, okay, so Ally, go to number three, please.
This is SP twenty-four twenty for Yeshiva stolen Carlin. It's a major site plan for a school on West County Line Road.
Okay, and Terry, when you're ready, can please go through your report?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm reading from our May twenty-fourth review. Uh, the top of page three, under submission waivers. You have purpose submission, topo contours, man-made features within two hundred feet. Plans and profiles and EIS, uh, we support the waivers for hearing purposes.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineers recommendations? So, um, okay, Mr. Meyer moves. Okay, we have a second. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, on to zoning.
All right, uh, under Roman numeral two, zoning on the bottom of page three of our review. Um, relief includes buffer variance relief, uh, eighteen nine oh six A of the U D O, as well as relief for parking in the buffer itself. And, uh, we'll hear testimony regarding bus loading and unloading spaces. Uh, there may be relief necessary for that. Uh, that's all the relief sought, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Who's the attorney on this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Fef, I'm on behalf of the applicant. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think I may have heard Mr. Renner. Just want to see if he is present.
Mr. Renner, are you there?
Okay. I heard him, I apologize.
Oh, good.
Um, yes, the application this evening is for construction of a two-story school, uh, with a basement. Um, the foot, building footprint is approximately twenty-three thousand six hundred seventy-five square feet. Um, all the existing improvements that are on site today are proposed to be removed and we will consolidate the lots. Um, we are in the R twelve residential zone district, which, which does provide, uh, for schools as a permitted use. I have test, I have Brian Flannery here to address any technical, uh, items. We can't swear in this time.
I think Glenn is on for this one.
I, I apologize. I, my notes are wrong. I apologize. Glenn, uh, if you're here, if we can swear, Mr. Lines in.
Mr. Lines, you swear a firm testimony will get before the court with the truth, I'll just nothing about the truth.
His voice has changed a little.
Oh, he's speaking, but you can't. He said yes. I see his lips move, but he's muted.
Sorry, I muted myself.
Okay. I think Adam, you had, you said, Glenn, can you swear, Mr. Lines?
If I did, it's been a long day. We don't, some of us don't do math after five. Some of us, uh, my apologies.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Mr. Lines, so Glenn, would you love, please proceed?
Okay, um, I believe we have the rabbi.
Glenn, let me just ask you. This is where the, the, the existing school is at this, at this side right now?
I'm sorry?
The existing school is at this side right now?
Uh, in temporary, yeah, in a temporary building, and, and in an existing house.
And a few houses over there. And you, and that, that's all coming down, consolidating, make one nice building?
That is correct.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, um, as, uh, was described, the site's along, uh, West County Line Road. Um, uh, it's several existing lots that will be, uh, merged. Existing houses to be torn down and proposing to build a school. The, uh, site backs up to, uh, the township park and, uh, one more, uh, lot to our, uh, east. So we had requested the buffer because we don't have any, we really don't, we don't have any neighbors to the rear. Uh, there is another new school, uh, looking at the plan to our left and one more lot to the right, uh, which I believe the house there is also being used as a school at this time. Uh, so as far as the buffers, we would be providing a buffer on the rear, uh, to, uh, township park, which is, um, wooded, uh, and the buffer to the, on the sides each go to other schools that have already, uh, I know the school to the east, uh, I'm sorry, to the west or the left as we look at it, uh, that school has already received a buffer waiver, uh, when we submitted that application. As far as the other, uh, variances, yeah, we have parking within eight feet of adjoining lot two, uh, which is the, the lot to the right. And, sorry, I'm trying to find the other variants. And the other variants is for loading and unloading spaces for the buses. Uh, we have an eighteen-foot wide, uh, loading and unloading, uh, aisle for the buses. But we did not, we did not stripe the, uh, parking spaces as required, as shown in the ordinance, uh, because we don't feel the buses will be parked there in the amount of time, uh, but we can't fit four buses in that. In that area.
Oh, whoever's not speaking, please. Is that an echo?
Okay, who? That's the cranky child.
Okay, somebody, you have to mute yourself. Whoever's not speaking.
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, Glenn, I'm sorry. Please continue.
The bus access lane is, is actually only for buses. Um, the buses come in, the buses will go out. There's no, no dual use. There's no car aisle in there. Uh, it'll be.
Are you asking for any variance on parking?
No, there's no parking variance. We have, we have adequate parking for the property.
So you don't need a bus lane to, for, for extra parking? You have plenty of parking?
Nope, we do not.
Okay. I want to put that on the record.
Uh, we're on a county road, uh, so we would, we'll need county approval for our, uh, entrance and exit driveways. Um, and we're providing, uh, the necessary, um, uh, additional right-of-way and paving that the county requires. So we're, we're doing everything the county's asked for. We'll be consolidating the lots as requested in the, in the letter. And, uh, other than that, unless the board, the board has questions, um, I don't think we have any comments.
Glenn, a few things. Number one, uh, are you, is, is there sidewalks on the property on County Line Road?
There, we're proposing count, uh, sidewalks on County Line Road, yes.
Okay, and what, what are you doing with trash?
Uh, there's a trash enclosure.
I, uh, lost all sound. Can any, is everyone else okay? Mr. Herzl, check and see if everyone else has, uh, got a signal here.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Ally just put a circle around where the trash enclosure is. Trucks can pull right in. Uh, back and make their K-turn and get back out onto West County Line Road.
Okay.
Six-foot fence around the, uh, proposed pool at the rear of the building.
Okay, could, sh- show me the, how are the buses, what's the, the pattern of, uh, traffic pattern over here? Buses are going to be coming in where and exiting where?
Boy.
Ally, you're great.
Ally, it's like you can read my mind.
Okay, the buses will be coming in there and they will pull up right in front of the building and they're going to go straight onto that sidewalk into the building.
Right. That's correct.
Okay, and do you have any play area for the children?
Uh, there's, uh, quite a large area behind the school.
I see it's a, a proposed pool.
Right, well, everything else behind the building and it's not a parking lot.
Is, is open, is open area for kids to play?
All open area, yes.
Okay, how big is the site? It's a pretty big site.
Um, let me check the, let me check the plan. This is a, a little over, uh, a little over two and a half acres. It's a hundred, hundred and four thousand square feet.
Okay, I, I, I like it. The garbage is by the, is not back where the kids are playing. Everything is separate. The kids are playing separate. There's a pool area separate. And, and the buses, the, the traffic, the buses could stop right in front of the school, drop off the kids and they could go straight in. They don't have to walk through the parking lot.
They don't have to walk through the parking lot and we specifically designed it so they don't have to deal with, you know, if a child for some reason walks between the buses, there's no car traffic on the other side of those buses.
Okay, and where are you going to keep the buses throughout the day?
They'll, they'll go back to Jay's Bus Service Parking Lot or wherever they.
Okay, it's not.
Where the buses go when they're not working.
Okay, yeah, you're not using up all your parking space for the buses, that's what I'm asking.
That's correct.
Okay, do any board members have any questions for Mr. Lines?
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a question?
Yes, of course. I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, Glenn, do, do you have any issues with any of the technical requirements in our letter?
Yeah, I, I reviewed the letter and I, I, I didn't find anything specific that, uh, we had a, a problem.
So you agree with everything?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'll open up to the public. Is anybody from the public uh, who would like to comment on this application? You said the rabbi was here?
I did not receive any emails, just for the record.
Okay, the rabbi wanted to speak?
The rabbi is here. If the board has any questions for the rabbi.
Hours of operation, everything was brought to the.
Standard first.
Okay, and it's a, uh, elementary school? There's no, there's no simple hall that you're making in the, in the basement?
Yeah, we have to put the rabbi under, uh, if he's going to provide testimony.
That, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we did, we did provide architectural plans. Um, if you look actually on, on the first page, the finished basement, there is a dining room. The total dining room is a little bit more than fifty-seven hundred square feet. Um, but as far as, you know, mostly be used for the school, uh, if they have some other events there, um, that might be, but if you look at the size of the room, it's not what you're thinking in terms of, of a, of a catering facility. In addition, just to answer your other question regarding play area, there is a approximately six thousand square foot indoor play area that's, uh, that's also in the basement.
Okay, so that's nice. In case of rains, you have way to play.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Ally. You, you pull it up.
You have more things in the basement too there. You have a bakery there too, I see.
Okay, that, that's, that's some of us being ancillary for the school for some teaching, for, for classes. Something to show the, uh, the students.
Okay. Okay, is, Ally, you didn't see anything? Mr.?
But we should.
Yes, I, uh, Ally, go, go ahead, please.
I was going to say, no, I don't have any emails, but we should, um, be sure to unmute any call-in users.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this application? Okay. Hey, Adam, the, the matzo baker that you found there is not, it's not open to the public. It's more for school use or?
Teaching, correct.
Right, right. It's not open to the public. Don't put that on the record. And some making it like a door or something else over there. Okay. Uh, Mr. Renner, do you feel comfortable that I can go for a motion or you want me to wait till you get to?
With the chairman?
Yes.
Time table.
Yes.
Can I ask, can I ask a question to Glenn?
Yeah, of course you can. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, is there sidewalks from, uh, both sides of, I guess, town line, uh, west and east? The sidewalk from the streets of the building?
No, we, we're not, we're not encouraging any of the younger children to walk along County Line Road. So we're only providing the sidewalks that the county wants. We're not, we're not connecting the sidewalks to the school.
Okay, Mr. Renner, the way I said it before, you're not looking at the plan, but I'll explain. They have a sidewalk on County Line Road and then they have the parking lot in front of the building. And with the buses pu- pull in, uh, in front of the building, they have sidewalks, the whole thing. The, the kids get dropped off straight up, right by a sidewalk, which goes straight into the building. There are no kids walking from County Line or going through, uh, the parking lot till you get through to the building. They're being dropped off by buses or by cars, straight by the building, which has sidewalks. Is that correct? On County Line Road, the whole front, it has sidewalk.
No, uh, before our property, to, to the, uh, east of our, this property, is there sidewalk?
That goes. Uh, I think from the park, from the park, the sidewalks all the way to Forest Avenue. I think they built that a few years ago.
I don't believe there are sidewalks.
There, there are sidewalks on the south side of County Line Road.
Well, this building is on the south side of County Line Road, right?
There's built, there's, from the park, I think there is. I'm, I'm almost sure from the park. But.
Is the park, uh, east or west of this property on County Line?
It is behind our property.
That's, 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 that's west.
One lot to the east.
There you, one, one, one lot, what?
One lot to the east. And it's also our rear, our rear property line.
Right, so there is sidewalks leading up to this property on County Line Road from the east to the west, which is this property.
That is correct.
So can we pl- please put, uh, a sidewalk, uh, on that side as well? And the reason for number one, if there's more school buses, uh, than, than we thought, and they will actually have to. than we thought, and they will actually have to go out past the loading zone, kids should be able to walk from the school bus and also from the street. Is there space to add another three or four feet sidewalk?
We have, we have no issue. We're providing sidewalk all along our property. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Stable.
Mr. He wants internal sidewalks from County Line.
We have no issue, we'll give internal sidewalk. We'll have a connection. Is that what you're asking for, an internal connection sidewalk?
From County Line Road to the building.
Yeah, but it's going to have to be on the west side because the east side has a retaining wall along the only grassed area.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, Chairman.
Okay, Terry, are you okay with it? Does it work?
Well, from what Ally just said, where we were looking on the east, you have a retaining wall on the property line. It will work schematically as Ally has shown here. If you put extra sidewalk within the property near, I guess it would be the north corner there along the frontage.
Okay, and you're not losing any parking spaces? You're not losing anything by bringing in that sidewalk?
No.
Okay, and you agreed to do it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sable, do you have any other question?
I want to hear exactly what Terry recommended. I paid it in and out. So they agreed to, about the retaining wall? Can they put after the retaining wall? Between the retaining wall and I guess any parking spot or?
They said the retaining wall, I think, is east. They can put the sidewalk, the inside sidewalk going from on the west side of the property. Going in from County Line to the building.
Only on the west side of this building, not on the east side?
Yes, because on the east side, they have a retaining wall, which doesn't make it feasible to put a.
There's like four feet from the curb of the parking spaces to the property line. And smack in the middle of that is a retaining wall running the full length of the property.
Yeah, I think it would be problematic. Hi, this is Terry speaking. Going to be very difficult to have a sidewalk on top of the wall. There's just not enough room.
Right, so if we need to put a sidewalk, they're going to lose parking spot.
Yes.
You would be losing a bank of ten parking spaces, that's correct.
Right, okay. And can we, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, you know the area better. Right, at least the right out from this property, so we don't cross County Line. I understand in, maybe we need both because the school bus is coming from Lakewood. Okay, is that a good idea? You know the area better and I'll leave it up.
Honestly, it's more safe to have a right out only. There are people who are going to be coming from Jacksons. My only, and there's no turnarounds over there. So I really don't know how that would work.
The county's going to, the county's going to require us to have right in, right out on that road anyway.
Okay.
A four lane road, they're not going to allow us to make a left turn.
Okay, so can I ask you, Mr. Lines, how would, if somebody has to go to Jackson from there, how is he going to go? He'll have to go to the next street and rip around?
Yes.
Okay. There are any other board members have any other questions? Mr. Sable, are you finished?
No, are you saying there's going to be a right in into this property and a right out of this property only?
Yes. Yeah, it's the same restriction that the county put on us for the yeshiva that's going in next door.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Chaim, where are you holding? Still seeing the traffic?
By exit one ten, I think it is. Mile marker one oh six, mile marker one oh six point four.
Okay, so I would ask, Chaim, you okay that I go for a motion right now?
Yeah, I mean, you have corn without me, do whatever you have to do.
No, I don't. I told you, you asked your question, you feel comfortable, not overweight? Whatever.
What about the sim hall? Is it going to be rented or not rented out?
They said no.
Again, it's a five thousand, plus a five thousand seven hundred fifty two square foot room that's primarily being used as a dining room for the school. The school may, just like every other school, may rent it out for other functions. But it's just to clarify, look at the size of this room. This is not a major facility.
All right, bar mitzvah would be perfect for bar mitzvah.
And we have sufficient parking.
How much parking do we have total?
The amount of spots, hold on a second, it's fifty eight, fifty seven.
Okay, hold on one second.
Hundred per, hundred square feet for parking lot, for each parking. If you use the sim hall, fifty seven hundred square feet.
Okay, I will ask for a motion on this application. I'll make motion. Who said? Well, okay. Jake, you make a motion, an agreement, whatever Mr. Sable said, right? Sidewalks on the west side to have a sidewalk going in to the building. Okay? And whatever else we said tonight. Okay, do we have a second on that one?
I'm Sable second.
I'm Sable, okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable? Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Number four.
Our next application is SP twenty four twenty one for Bayshandel. It's a preliminary file on major site plan for a school on Lewin and Summer.
It's what, speaking?
I want to hear anyone.
I don't know who.
It was Mr. Zax, I muted him. This is a major site plan for a school on Lewin and Summer.
Okay.
Mr. Zax, it's not time for public comment, you need to stay muted at the moment.
Okay, Terry, can you please go through your comments as soon as Ally brings it up?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be starting in our June tenth review. Ally has up the top of page four under submission waivers. The waivers include plan details for the submission, those who are going to planning, topo contours and manmade features within the site, plans and profiles, utility layouts and EIS. We support the waivers for hearing purposes.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation? So then who made a motion? Everybody muted? Jake, you made, who moved, I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to Zolin.
All right, I'm reading from top of page five. The first comment is going to require some discussion from the applicants professionals. You have a right of way which traverses this property. It may or may not have an impact in terms of hearing the application as one site plan is indicated in comment one. We'll be talking about that shortly. Continuing on, various that are required include front yard setback for various lots as well as parking relief for lot two. Possible buffer relief, which will get testimony on that as well, as well as bus loading and unloading. I believe that's it under the potential zoning relief. And then finally, under design waivers, design waivers are sought from improving railroad street as well as the northern portion of Lewin Avenue, as well as onsite curving throughout the entirety of lot two and lot four oh two. I believe that's all the relief, Chairman.
Okay, the first comment that you said, you don't know if it could be heard by our board or could be heard as one application or two applications?
We had discussed this with the applicant professionals a couple times and I'm sure John is going to chime in shortly. But some of the prior conversations where there was a concern expressed as to whether or not in the absence of vacating that right of way Lewin Avenue, if this could be heard as one site plan. John, I don't know if you want to add anything here?
Yeah, we should clarify it before we start.
Yeah, my initial reaction to this was that they did two different applications, which is really more administrative than anything else. And I thought they're two different parcels separated by a road that operate or are conceived to operate independently or could be sold to a different party, that they would need two separate resolutions and two different files that would go with their lot and blocks on either side of the road. I thought that was a better way to administer this. So I thought that it could be combined to one site only if vacating the road was a condition of approval. But I talked to Mr. Schmuckler about it, and let me tell you, he can be pretty persuasive. And I also spoke to Harold Hensel and John Doyle. I just spoke to some colleagues to see what they thought. And the consensus among the attorneys I spoke with, there's no reason why this cannot be considered as one site plan, even though there's a roadway in between or it's vacated or not. I'm not comfortable with that, but it's really a matter of policy by the board. You know, it's going to undergo common ownership. What I see, if there's not two different sites, you have one resolution governing two different parcels that could ultimately be broken up.
Is that contiguous?
No, while they are without, if the road gets vacated, if they're, if they're, right now, there's a street in between the two of them.
Is the road ever going to be paved? Is it ever going to be used as a road? Or just going to be left as open area?
It is a road because it's shown on the tax map as a street. It's referred to as a paper street, but that is a public right of way right now. Unless and until it gets vacated, it is a road, even though it's unimproved.
So why shouldn't we listen to it as two applications? Is there any set reason why not?
Mr. Chairman, this is Adam.
That's, that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Pfeffer, that's what I struggled with, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a matter of policy that the board has to determine. I don't think there's anything that prohibits it. I don't think there's anything that requires it one way or the other. And it's a matter of how the board wants to deal with this.
And just building off of what Mr. Jackson just said, that's the most important thing. There is no restriction that requires two separate properties owned by the same party that are contiguous with the road in the middle, that they have to be separate site plans. We have addressed this, there is no, there's nothing in the MLU well, there's nothing in the township ordinance. And our position is, it's actually a better application hearing it as one. Many times the board, think about it, just does the opposite. You see a subdivision application with a later site plan application and we give all the testimony together because you're looking for one resolution. You want them to be built off of each other. I believe there are going to be improvements here that are all going to be shared by the two properties. And while I respect what Mr. Jackson says, I do believe even if one of these properties in the future looks to be sold, one resolution does not hinder it in any way, shape or form. And it's our position that there's no reason why this should be restricted. Rabbit and Eric has set forth this application this evening. We are here, we are professionals and we should at least be able to provide our testimony so we could go and explain to you why it's the best application being heard as one.
Okay.
And with that, if no one has any objections, I would like to call my first witness.
So I don't know if you want to call the board and see what they think about it. I mean, it's kind of a threshold issue. Do you want this as two applications, one application?
My question to you, I don't want to push them off because it's a school. They want to start working over. If we listen to it as two applications, can it still be heard tonight? Well, that means we're pushing them off.
They had agreed to apply to get the street vacated. And they also agreed during the plan review that they could make the approval conditioned upon getting the street vacated. I mean, one of the options here, the board always talks about completing streets. You know, you can make them sides of the street and put sidewalks on both sides down the middle instead of having it be like a no man's land there too as an option if it was.
Yeah, but if you're having the school, it's contiguous, the school is kind of, you have one big parcel for the school. Then I don't want a road in the middle.
Mr. Schmuckler said it's kind of like a campus during the plan review. So I mean, whatever you want to do, I think we can make it work either way. It's a matter of what policy and what direction the board wants to take on this particular one.
Okay, if they're here tonight.
It's a threshold issue.
My personal opinion, I would tell them to go ahead. Unless any board members feel differently, please voice your opinion. So anyway, Mr. Stern, Mr. Renner?
I think this is fine, we should move forward. It's a school and times, you know.
Times, okay. So is there anybody from the board who feels differently? No, so let's continue.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, at this time, if I, Mr. Jackson, if I can swear in Mr. Flannery at this time?
No, but Mr. Flannery, you swore firm testimony will be, you'll give before the board the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. So the application this evening is for a school application on both sides of Lewin Avenue. We have a, a boys' high school that's being proposed on the west side of Lewin Avenue. And then we have a school with a multipurpose room on the east side of Lewin Avenue, which is on the same property with a school that's already an existing school on Summer Avenue, where a gymnasium is under construction. An area was submitted which shows, this is in the M one zone. To the north is the railroad track, so Lewin Avenue is never going through. The proposal is that we're going to develop it as Mr. Schmuckler had indicated at the tech meeting in a campus type fashion. And I should point out that campuses are allowed to have multiple lots that are separated by right of ways and even separated by other other properties. And as Mr. Jackson indicated, when you look through the Lakewood ordinance and the MLUL, all it says on site plan, the definition of a site plan, it says means development, a plan of one or more lots, which is shown. And then it goes through all the detail that we've shown. So the MLUL clearly envisioned more than one lot. As a policy procedure, if the board wanted to do two separate resolutions, two separate votes, the applicant has no problem with it. The applicant will also request a vacation of Lewin past where we're proposing development to the governing body. If the governing body feels that's the appropriate action and they vacate it, then it would be a vacation and it would solve that problem. If the governing body does not feel that it should be vacated because there may be some future use for that, well, then it would stay and we would have a site plan with two separate lots. If we look at the the items in the, in the application, Terry's review letter spells out pretty good with the, under the project description. We have a two story building with a finished basement on lot one oh two in block three ninety six. That's the lot to the west. And there's an existing trailer on that lot that's going to be relocated to the east side of the street. The existing trailer is for early intervention and associated with the school. And that would be located to the opposite side of the street where the school and the multipurpose hall are going to be located. We're providing parking that would be two hundred parking spaces on the west side and a hundred and sixty parking spaces on the east side, which is well more than the parking that's required by the ordinance. The ordinance requires sixty six parking spaces and we have three hundred and sixty proposed. Obviously, the three hundred and sixty proposed is so that if the multipurpose room is used as a whole, there would be sufficient parking. So going through the list of the relief that's required, we're asking for a front. we're asking for a front yard setback on lot 1.02 and three in block 396. We're proposing 50 feet where 140 feet is required. That was the initial comment. The the plan has been changed, so it's 101.87 feet where 140 feet is required. The front yard setback for lot two in block 402, 50 feet, 59.7 feet for the trailer and 50 feet for the building are proposed 140 feet. And again, this is a campus like setting, so the the front setbacks are on the other side of the street. If the board, if the governing body decides vacating Lewin is the appropriate thing to do, it's it's going to be to each side. So it's my professional opinion that there's no adverse impact associated with that. With respect to parking, it indicates in comment five on page six that testimony should be provided with regards to the parking. And again, we have 200 parking spaces on the west side, 160 on the east side for a total of 360, where the ordinance requires 66. And then if we look at the the hall, the hall has a an area of 12,047 square feet with 360 parking spaces. That's one space for every 33 square feet, much more than required by the ordinance, which the most stringent ordinance requirement for parking is one per 50 square. So we're doing one per 33. So it's Rabbit Canerick is familiar with these type of uses, the school uses, and he's providing a parking lot that's providing sufficient parking so that there will not be any problem for the school or the general public. Design waivers, we're asking a design waiver not to improve Railroad Street. We think Railroad Street will probably never go anywhere, but if utilities are needed to be extended down there, it's right away that's existing that can do that. The partial design waiver is required from improving the northern portion of Lewin Avenue, and that's a portion of the road that's not going to be utilized by anybody else. We will defer to township. It's a township thinks it should stay there in case it ever needs to be improved in the future. Then it'll stay there. If not, it would be vacated and and the question would be solved. So with respect to the relief that's requested, the master plan of 2017 under division statement says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. It's my testimony that it does that. The same master plan on page 10 under community facilities says for continue to support development of private schools in the township of Lakewood, and that this accomplishes that goal. The municipal land use law NJ SA 40 colon 55 D two under the purpose of the act indicates to encouragement this action to guide the appropriate use for development of all lands and estate, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, and morals and general welfare. It's my testimony that that this does that. These are C two variances where we need to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. We have a property that already has a school on it. It has a trailer on the other lot. We're maximizing the use of this to provide for the the residents of Lakewood. The purpose of the municipal land use law, I read to you. The variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good. This is in an area where the the schools on both sides are complementing each other. The variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and schools are permitted. And the benefits need to substantially outweigh the detriment. So my testimony is that there is virtually no detriment and the benefits are providing the the school and the uses.
Where the buses are going to be coming in?
The the there was a traffic circulation plan that was submitted that was where the the buses circulate and and they would come into the parking lot, pull next to the building, and and they it it can accommodate the the buses that are proposed. The buses have a lot of room where they can stack, and it looks like it would be an imposition to the parking lot. But when you when you realize that the buses are coming, when the hall is not being used, it's an area where we only need 66 parking spaces, so there's certainly plenty of room to accommodate the the parking and still allow the buses to make that circulation. And and if there's more than the five buses that fit in front of the building at the time of drop off, they have sufficient room in the parking lot.
You have room here for 30 buses going all the way to make that whole loop?
Yes.
Wow. The buses can make all those turns? It's a lot of turns to get a.
Yes, the the turning template has been provided for the buses.
Well, and all the students are going to be dropped off right in front. They don't have to walk through the parking lot.
Correct. Correct.
Wow. And do you have any trucks coming in for any deliveries?
The the truck, the deliveries can be scheduled when it doesn't impact the buses and the bus drop off. So again, there's plenty of room for if you can see had the the room there is for the buses, it would be the same room that's available for the trucks.
Yeah.
Through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
Why not finish the improvement of Lewin Avenue and square everything off? Go back to the previous map, please, Ally. Is it that much cost to finish off Lewin Avenue all the way down to Railroad Street? And then just take a left into you don't have to do the little serpentine pattern if you do that. You just take a left, and then it's a much cleaner. Yeah, just pave all that, and then you're there you go. Exactly. You're good, Ally. I mean, yeah, you just go straight and you take a left, and it's 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 a nice loop.
I mean, that that is an option, but it it requires the school to pave more than is needed to accomplish the goals of what's needed. I mean, Rabbi Canerick, when he looks at these sites.
Brian, you got to pave it regardless. If you if that if Lewin gets vacated, what are you doing with it? It's a little nowhere. You can make the parking lot bigger or road bigger, whatever. What are you going to do with it?
If Lewin get vacated, we 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 could make the parking lot bigger and and then there would be some value to the additional pavement. Certainly during resolution compliance, we could see if the the governing body is inclined to vacate Lewin. And if that's the case, then we would.
Brian, Brian, why wouldn't they? What are they going to do with that?
Perhaps I can just jump in. Just Brian, if you look at the grading, there's two retaining walls that can never be done. It dives down. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Josh, you got to get sworn in. We have to swear your word, Josh.
Do you swear firm testimony before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. And after such an introduction by John, I couldn't not say a word on this application.
Josh, just your name and your affiliation, please.
Josh Schmuckler, I'm the chief operating officer of new lines engineering. We were the my company was engineers for this project, and I sat in many, many meetings on this project. Lewin Avenue at the end dives down. If you could see on this plan, there's there's two retaining walls that sort of skirt Lewin Avenue, both on the top and bottom of it. I'm sure Ally, if, yeah, right there. So even if we were complete Lewin straight down, like make it like a hill down, it'd go to nowhere, and vehicles couldn't come in and turn into the parking lots from there. It literally goes down from like, if you go to the grading sheet, you'll see it dives down pretty pretty steep.
So that should be like a scarier drive to do it this way.
Yeah, it's much safer ending where it's flat. We're keeping the site as flat as possible. Usually we like keeping it between like a two and 5% pitch. It keeps water flowing, but it's safe for kids and buses and everything.
Okay, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right. So the only other thing I wanted to point out in the report is that we did a traffic study, and I'm assuming Scott Kennel is here to comment if the board wants to hear. There is a comment with respect to a traffic signal at the intersection of Lewin and and Prospect. And we need county approval. If the county says we need to provide our fair share for that traffic signal, obviously, we're going to have to do that. So that that would that'd be an issue that we don't want to be a condition of this approval, but we understand we have to meet with the county, and the county will require us to pay our fair share of whatever's needed.
Any other questions from Mr. Flannery? Any board members have any questions? Brian, is there anything in the report that you don't agree with?
No. All the other comments we would satisfy as part of resolution compliance.
My counsel, so I apologize. I forgot to ask the board earlier if you accept Brian as an expert in this field.
It's too late. Now it's too late.
I think you've heard everything. Do you excited? I just need it for the record.
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, so can we open it up to the public?
We have we had received three emails. The second comment, I received a specific email from the individuals asking to rescind his letter of opposition. So I only have two to read. I will just read them. I think it's faster than anything else. This is the first from Charles Gamarekian Jr. He says to the boards, the memorandum, this memorandum is in reference to the upcoming June 15 hearing to consider this proposed development. I, Charles Gamarekian, Vice President of Cambridge Pavers, am an officer of Cambridge Pavers and am authorized to speak on their behalf. CPI has no objection to the development and has no objection to the request waivers. However, we offer the following comments and requests may be part of the final plan approval. CPI is located on block 386, lot 1.01, and Clayton Block Ready Mix Plant is located on 386, lot 1.04. We believe the submitted plans may incorrectly label these properties as block 391. However, the certified owners list appears to be correct. Since CPI's purchase of the concrete products manufacturing facility from Clayton Block, CPI has gone to great lengths to protect the public by fencing off large sections of its property, particularly along its northerly property line to prevent individuals from transitioning across active manufacturing areas onto Havenwood Court and eventually Prospect Avenue. The northeasterly corner of the CPI property directly adjoins the proposed Bay Shane Dale Lewin Avenue development. By way of this memorandum, CPI is requesting the developer install a continuous fence along the northerly, westerly, and southerly property lines of block 396, lot 1.02, to assure that people coming and going to the facility are funneled to the front of the property to the frontage along Lewin Avenue so that individuals are not tempted to find access to the south or west through active light industrial operations. CPI believes that this is paramount to the safety of Lakewood Township residents. I can read the next unless you'd like to hear a response first. The next, I'm sorry, Mr. Pazadi is on the line and would like to speak, and we need to open to the other callers, but I don't know if you want to hear from the applicant's request for a fence first.
Brian, would you like to respond to it?
If the board feels a fence is appropriate, we would install a fence.
Okay. Is there any other comments that you have that you have to address?
I'm sorry, Ally. Could you go back to that screen and just see if you could mark up to see where the fence the the neighbor is looking for? Just try and understand where that fence is going.
He said along the northerly, westerly, and southerly lines of block 396, lot 1.02, which I believe is this. So the.
He's boxing you in.
I'm not sure if you can do northerly because technically that's a road, that's Railroad Street. You might need a variance for a fence along that front property line if it's too high, but northerly, westerly, and southerly.
And I don't know what how the northerly would impact him anyway. That's toward the railroad.
You did say the elevation drops over there, no?
There's a retaining wall there anyway, so it'd be no purpose of putting a fence.
Retain wall high, could kids get there? Is it dangerous?
That's be fenced on top of the retaining wall. There'll be a fence to keep kids from falling down the retaining wall.
Okay, so then we do have a fence on that side.
It just won't be on the property line. It'll be.
The wall is right here, though. So I think their request was for the whole property.
Yeah, I don't think they're they're concerned about being on the property line. I think they're concerned having it fenced in like Ally talks about, so the kids don't go on to the facility.
So, Mr. Schmuckler, do you agree to put a fence around them?
I see Rabbi Canerick, I think, is on if he agrees.
Yes, the applicant agrees. Not on the property line, but we will fence in these three sides, either through the the retaining wall or through a fence.
Okay, thank you. Is this Robert Canerick? Would Robert Canerick like to speak? Adam?
I don't believe, I know he's available to speak if anybody has any questions. But I don't think at this time.
I just want to give the courtesy if he wants to speak.
Understood.
Okay, so.
And then we have a number of unnamed call in users as well as a bunch of names who I know are not board members, and I'm not sure if they're here on this one. So we can start unmuting.
So please unmute everybody. And one at a time, Ally, if you can call on a number, one at a time, they can speak. Please respect it.
Call in phone number ending in oh seven. Would you like to speak on this application? Okay, call in phone number ending in two nine. Would you like to speak on this application?
Can I act with that well?
Hold on just a minute. Mr. Kirschenbaum or Mr. Zaxx? Are you here on this application?
No.
No, they're not.
Okay, I'm going to mute them. Call in number ending in eight three. Is that? That's not Mr. Garfield. That's it. Well, he can't be on twice. Call in number ending in eight three. Would you like to speak on this application? Okay, I have an Abby Hirsch.
Did you say yes? Number three, eight three?
I'll be here on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Mr. Zaxx, I asked already, I'm sorry. I'm looking. Mr. David Grooman, are you here on this application?
Yes.
Yes, would you like to speak then?
I believe you were just a comment from my landlord, Santo.
We will get to Mr. Santo next, just a moment.
Mr. Zaxx?
Either either of the Mr. Zaxx's, are you here on this? I don't believe so.
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry.
Are you here on the application for? Thank you. We will come to you when we get to that application. Mr. Jim Bean, are you here on this application? He's unmuted but not saying anything. Okay, I'm going to continue.
Okay, so we have you have another email, I think you had.
Yes, we're getting there. Michael, are you here on this application?
No.
Thank you. I'm going to assume Prospect resident. Are you here on this application?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Pazadi, I'm unmuting you now. I believe you're here on this application.
He wants to speak.
Can you hear me?
Just identify yourself and put your address on the record.
Okay, my name is Santo Pazadi. My address is 217 Green Drive, Churchville, Pennsylvania, 18966.
Ally, do you need this spelling office name?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, this is the board attorney, John Jackson. What is your your standing and your interest in this application?
I am the property manager for four buildings along Prospect Street.
All right, thank you. Then you have standing. Please, do you affirm or swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter?
I do, sir.
Please proceed.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for hearing me. I am, I'm really concerned about our our building there. It's called XL4, which is the address of 687 Prospect Street. It's a two level building. And we, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing the name of the road right. Lu- Luwan Road, Luen Road?
Luen Road?
Yeah, that road is used right there, right where the red line is. That would be the access road from what I understand to the to the two new buildings that we're talking about building. My experience over the last year or so is that the the existing trailer school that was back there. was back there, it causes traffic jams on our road, on the road, Lewin Road, and it backs up bumper to bumper, the whole length of my, the whole length of XL5, XL4, which is 687 Prospect Street. And it blocks tractor and trailers, straight jobs, everything, from getting in and out of the loading docks during the morning when they drop off, when the parents drop off, and in the afternoon when the parents pick up. Now, my experience is that when they, after they, after the parents drop the kids off, they come up the hill and they see that there's a traffic jam there, they make, I'm looking down on the map, they make a left where, right at the end of my building, they go down the hill, right, exactly right, then they make a right and they, they try to get access to Prospect Street. Now, it's my understanding that that's private, private property, and it's a very, it's been a dangerous situation for the last year or so, where the parents are in a hurry to get to Prospect Street, and I have tenants in that area, they're using forklifts and unloading tractors and trailers out on the road and bringing it back into their property, and I've gotten several calls where it's, it's just a very dangerous situation. I, I don't see how you're gonna have that size of a school and that many buses on this, on this particular stretch of road, Lewin Road, in front of my building, 687 Prospect Street. I think it's gonna be a disaster. You're, you're, I don't know, I'm assuming everyone knows Prospect Street. During the morning and during, and in the afternoon, it's almost impossible to make any movements along that, along Prospect Street, it's just constantly backed up. They get to Cross Street and, and you, it's impossible to make a left, you make a right and the, all the buses have to stop for the traffic, for the railroad crossing. Now, I'm, like I said, I'm the manager for, for four buildings along Prospect Street. The county has been attempting to put a red light in, replace a blinking light down at Massachusetts Avenue for the last three or four years. And it's just, it's just a very uncomfortable situation, and, and it's causing financial hardship for my tenants because they can't get their supplies in and out. And in the future, I know that when I go, if a tenant leaves me, I know that it's gonna be very difficult for me to lease space in that building because all they have to do is just be there one time in the pickup or the drop off in the morning. Now, the traffic is, the traffic is one in, one, one case. The other one is, down at XL1 and 2, I'm specifically XL2, which is 75, 2, or 575 Prospect Street, I'm on Summer Avenue, my property's border Summer Avenue, and the school down there, some of the boys ride their bikes up Summer Avenue and they cut through my parking lot behind XL3, which is 585 Prospect Street. They cut through there with their bikes and then they come out to the blinking light and it's, it's, it's a very dangerous situation with, with the children riding their bikes, they, they come on Massachusetts Avenue or XL Place. So I, I, I can almost guarantee you that if these two buildings get built, that's exactly what's gonna happen coming up and going around this building. The next, the other thing, I don't know if we, if you want to discuss the, the traffic now, or do you want me to go through the, the other item that I have? The other item is the, is the drainage issue. I'm downstream and I can tell you that Railroad, Railroad Street is almost like a river when it rains. And, and the back of my property loads up and it's impossible to get rid of the water. I'm at 575 Prospect Street, my, if you look at the note that, that Ally has up, it says power imprints, that, that, that whole parking lot there gets loaded with water and it's, there's no place for it to go. So I, I, again, I would like to know, did the engineers calculate to see what kind of runoff from this property is gonna go into the other properties? So those are mainly my, my two concerns, but I really have a lot of, a lot of objections to these two buildings being built back there, and based on this little road that we have going in front of my property, getting access to those, to those two buildings. I, I would suggest, to be honest, I would suggest that these two buildings need to, to get access out to Summer Avenue and let them come up the Summer Avenue and, and come up to Prospect Street, not travel, yeah, not travel up past 687 Prospect.
Mr. Flannery, are you there?
Yes, and we have submitted a traffic report and, and I would assume Scott Kennel is available to, to testify on this, but it's a, you know, it's a permitted use, again, the board needs to look at the traffic, the traffic problem that occurs is on Prospect Street because the county has to do traffic improvements, which they're working on, but not getting done. So this is an off-site traffic problem that's impacting a permitted use, and Scott, Scott Kennel can give you his professional opinion on, on how the traffic works. The other issue he mentioned is drainage, and we provided a drainage design that meets these state standards, and, and it's my opinion that after it's built, the drainage situation will be better than it is pre-developed.
Are there, is there a detention basin on site?
It's an underground recharge system.
Okay. All right.
Also, this is Adam Pepper. I believe that there's a grading issue, that same grading issue we spoke about before on Lewin, is the reason why the Sum, the Summer Avenue cannot be, cannot be created as a pass-through. Also, Mr. Pazadi, if I can just ask you a couple of questions, do your, do any of your tenants or their trucks park along Lewin Avenue?
They don't park along Lewin Avenue. They, they use, it's my understanding and my experience that a tractor and trailer will come in off of Prospect Street, let's say make a right or make a left, and then they'll pull up and then they'll, they'll use Lewin Avenue to back into the loading docks on that, on that upper side of the, on that upper side of the, right, yeah, just like that. I have...
Wouldn't you agree that that also creates a traffic issue and a traffic concern?
Yeah, probably for about two minutes, yeah, I would say that.
I, I don't know if it's one minute...
All right, I think, I think the board understands what the issues are, let's move on, let's have...
Excuse me, Mr. Jackson, I have the right to cross-examine. He has some questions, I, I'm not finished, I'd like to ask him, when, he was the manager when the building got approved.
All right, all right, please proceed.
So again, Mr. Pazadi, when you got the building approved, were tractor trailers provided for in that resolution?
I, I wasn't available, I wasn't here when the building got approved.
Okay, and are you aware, are there any parking variances on, for your building?
I, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
And you don't, this school has no parking variances.
We have, we have no parking variances and as Brian indicated, we're permitted use. And again, and again, Lewin Avenue is a public right-of-way. This is not a private road.
Okay, I think right now, Mr. Scott Kennel is here, if he could address some of the issues on the traffic.
Mr. Kennel, do you swear from testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth?
I do. Scott Kennel with McDonough and Ray Associates testifies as a traffic expert.
Mr. Kennel, you're familiar with this property?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, do you accept, do you accept Mr. Kennel?
Yes, I do. You heard, you heard what the opposition said, right? Can you address those issues?
Yes, I, I have, I guess I'll go along two lines. Brian had mentioned that in our traffic reports that we recommended a future condition with a traffic signal at Lewin and Prospect Street, and again, that's to address the traffic volumes on Prospect Street, and the traffic signal would provide opportunities for traffic to safely enter and exit Lewin Avenue, those being those existing users, as well as the proposed use. My recommendation is that that is a more preferred location than adding additional traffic to Summer Avenue, which is only about 400 to 500 feet from Massachusetts and XL, where the traffic signal is under construction by the county. So it would be, be better suited for the corridor to have a signal at Lewin, and it's also gonna be able to serve the residential streets on the south side, too, to provide them an opportunity to access Prospect Street. As far as cut-through traffic, we can work with the board's engineer as far as adding signage on Lewin Avenue in, in the vicinity on the north side of that warehouse building to say, no through traffic, no public traffic, you know, private property, we can work through that to add the appropriate signage to discourage use of that, of that property to access Prospect Street. And then again, this is all subject to, we haven't received the county comments yet, but this is something that is a recommendation in, in the June 4 traffic report, and that we will discuss further with the county as we advance this application.
Can I speak?
One second. Mr. Kennel, are you finished?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Could you please address, who are you, what's your name?
My name's Santo Pazadi.
Oh, you're, you're on the road, okay.
Okay. What I would like to know is, has anybody calculated what the, during pickup and, and drop-off, what is the stacking for the buses and cars in front of my building?
I, I, I don't know, but I know they testified before, have enough room on their property...
No, not, not their property, I'm talking about when they drop off and they come up Lewin Road towards Prospect Street, and when they hit Prospect Street and they can't go out, what's the, what's the length of their stacking?
Well, that's why, that's again, why we suggested that ultimately as the school is, increases its enrollment and it's built out, that a traffic signal is recommended at that location, and with a traffic signal, the, it'll extend approximately, one second here, approximately 200 feet from Prospect Street along Lewin Avenue with, with the installation of a traffic signal.
So, do you have the, do you have the counts to warrant a traffic signal now?
Not now, but with, as the school is built and as it's, it achieves maximum occupancy or enrollment, the, the traffic volumes would warrant a traffic signal.
Through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
So, can I just say...
One at a time, please. Mrs. Stern, right now, too.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Kennel, if the signal's not, first of all, do you agree with Mr. Pazadi's characterization of the traffic at peak loads?
Yes, there are, and that's evident through the presentation of our traffic study.
Okay. And if the light's not done when you have peak capacity, will the situation get appreciably worse?
Yes, there will be longer queues on Lewin Avenue and greater delays. Now, again, it's also important to recognize that current conditions don't take into consideration the traffic signal that's under construction up Massachusetts Avenue, which is gonna help traffic flow on Prospect. And again, we also have to remember that the county is designing the intersection of Prospect and Cross with a traffic signal, which is gonna, again, help the conditions along Prospect Street. You have extensive delays right now on Prospect Street because both of those intersections are unsignaled.
Mr. Kennel, sorry, this is Adam Pepper. Also, would you agree that once the parking lots are created and they're paved and they're, they're surfaced, the busing, all those cars and buses will be able to come off of Lewin Avenue and onto the site, which help, which should help create, which should help alleviate the queue?
Well, again, I, I don't think the concern was the vehicles coming on Lewin Avenue to the school, because again, the school is far enough removed from Prospect Street, the circulation and layout is, can accommodate it. So the key is when, in the morning when the buses are leaving after drop-off, and then when at school, at, when classes are dismissed in the afternoon.
Okay.
Is the Stars program going away when this school is built, or the Stars program will still be there?
It will still be there on a different, on the location, they're moving the, the existing location of it, but it will be on the site.
Yeah, they're moving it to the east side of Lewin Avenue.
All right, so we'll still have the traffic from the Stars, which is more individual cars?
Correct, and I've taken that into consideration.
And those, that program is the one that causes the traffic jam on, on Lewin Avenue right now in front of my building.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else for the public who would like to be heard on this application?
I did receive another email. I'm gonna, and there's also a, I'm gonna butcher this name, but there's someone on, I don't know, I don't think it's a person, Yamtav Porges. I don't know if that's on this application.
Do you see, where's his name?
I just unmuted it. You might have to scroll to the next screen to see it. Yamtav Porges, I'm not sure if that's on this application. If so, please speak up.
Yamtav Porges.
Thank you.
Mr. Yamtav Porges, are you, are you there and do you want to speak on this application?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna assume no, I'll unmute that and I'm gonna share, and we can read the final comment that just came in, and then I would recommend that we close to the public. This is from Mark Becker. He said, "Dear members, Mr. Flannery testified incorrectly. He stated on the record that the most stringent parking requirement in Lakewood is one spot for every 50 square feet. He therefore claimed that the parking proposed for this wedding hall use is sufficient. However, Lakewood Township has in fact enacted a new ordinance requiring a one-to-one parking ratio. This ordinance required the banquet hall applicant to provide for one parking spot for each one attendee at a wedding and similar events. Wedding halls in Lakewood, AKA Hasunas, especially this magnitude, bring far more vehicles than what the applicant is providing. Keep in mind that Lake Terrace Hall is approximately 11,500 square feet, and this hall is over 500 square feet larger with less parking. Additionally, several of the parking spaces will be utilized by the caterers' refrigerated trucks, storage containers, waiters' vehicles, and other catering-related paraphernalia, which will take up much-needed spots. For instance, the Lake Terrace Caterer uses about 40 spots for his uses and restricts the regular guests from that area. Accordingly, when the parking lot gets filled, this will cause more backup onto the regular roadway." That is the last public comment that I received via email, and I believe we unmuted and heard from everyone who wanted to speak.
Okay, so I will close it to the public.
One of my tenants, one of my tenants wanted to talk, but he said he was, he was muted.
I'm sorry, do you know his name?
David.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought he was indicating that you were going to speak and that he was just here kind of in support.
David Garfield.
Mr. Grooman, did you want to speak?
No, I mean, I think my landlord pretty much covered it. I'm not here in objection to any schools being built in this town, you know, that's definitely something that the town needs, and I don't want to be construed that, um, objecting to a school being built. However, I just did want to point out, I know...
Well, sir, you, you said you weren't going to object or say anything, now you're saying however. Do you swear a firm testimony to give before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name.
My name is David Grooman. I have this 62...
Please proceed.
So, what, what, what I was saying is that I'm not opposed to the, to schools being built in Lakewood, I just want to point out, just to add on to what my landlord was trying to explain about the access on Lewin. Lewin is, I know Mr. Pepper was saying that it's a right-of-way and all that, I mean, I didn't know there was a traffic study done and all that, but the, the street is not a very wide street, and we, I don't know who approved it, but the access to my loading docks is from Lewin Avenue, and we have a very active warehouse, and there are trucks backing in from Lewin Avenue all day, and if there's gonna be buses and added cars coming down, you're gonna have a real, real issue. I don't know the exact measurements, but from my dock to the street, whole entire street is used as a, as a backup point for my trucks to get in. So if the access is gonna be through Lewin Avenue, you're gonna have big issues with, with getting to this project. Now, I know they mentioned that, that Summer Avenue is not a good option because it's too... know they mentioned that that Summer Avenue is not a good option because it's too close to Massachusetts. However, if you do look at Summer Avenue, Summer Avenue has zero loading docks coming off Summer Avenue. It's a very wide street. I believe it's like way wider than Lewin Avenue. It's a very narrow street. Summer Avenue is a very wide street with no loading docks coming off it. All the properties feed off of Summer Avenue and loading docks are all on interior. There's no loading docks coming straight off Summer Avenue. Summer Avenue is wide, much wider. There's actually trucks always parked on on Summer Avenue and there's still a lot of room to for access. And Lewin Lewin Avenue is a very thin street and has loading docks, literally trucks will be pulling in and out to back up into the loading docks. And this will cause a major, major issue for access.
Okay, thank you.
So Chairman, if I can also, one of the witnesses, Mr. Arabak, who's builder for the school, he may be able to provide some, some, some help to help alleviate some of the concerns regarding.
Okay, he has to be affirmed.
Yes.
Mr. Arabak, do you affirm that the testimony will give before this, or be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Jackson, if Mr. Arabak is giving testimony, then we have to open to the public again? What?
Mr. Arabak has a suggestion to help maybe alleviate some of the.
It's on the applicant's side. It's on the applicant. This is for the applicant. Nothing to do with public. Have an idea. I could alleviate some of the issues.
Okay, so don't open to the public again. Mr. Jackson, that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Arabak, please go ahead.
Okay, so what my, my suggestion was is that as of now, there's gonna be a preschool, which definitely causes much more of a vehicle concentration on Lewin Avenue. There's also gonna be a small, a other other elementary division, if you will, off of Summer Avenue. So my suggestion is, we agree to relocate, once the building is complete, to relocate the preschool to enter off of the downstairs, if you will, off of Summer Avenue, which will minimize and mitigate a good amount of the vehicle traffic that backs up on Lewin Avenue. Basically, this building that is entering from Lewin Avenue has entrance to the top on Lewin and bottom is gonna enter in the back of the other school that's over here. Uh, you can't see my mouse. The back of this parking lot, actually, is, yeah, right there. Thank God. The back of that is gonna be other schools. So we could do is, and that entry, that level, we could direct all the vehicle traffic out onto Lewin Avenue and onto Summer Avenue.
What, you have a, you have an easement with the adjoining, the other school, Terrace Riva?
It's the same owner.
Same owner.
Same owner.
Oh.
Same owner.
Oh, that helps.
It's the same owner. So therefore, I would, once the building is complete, we can move the Stars to the downstairs of the, and move the elementary preschool upstairs, which will alleviate that those come by buses, which will mitigate a good amount of the vehicle traffic on Lewin Avenue.
Mr. Arabak, you get a gold star for the day.
Yeah, the only thing is, a Terrace Riva can have a wedding the same time as they have, so we can't utilize their parking spaces.
By day. It's not a, no, that's a night only.
Yes, neither.
Correct. And as well, there's no, there's no kids driving bikes. This is a girls' high school. There's no bikes here. But I do appreciate the neighbors' concern, and I can totally empathize, but there will not be any bikes here. There's no bikes permitted to be driven here to the school.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I close it, I close it to the public.
Chairman, a timetable. I just said on my desk.
Okay.
Can you bring up the circulation plan, Ally, if you don't mind?
It's page, it's page number 16 of 18.
Yes, just give me a moment. It takes a minute to open that whole file.
Absolutely, big file. And maybe meanwhile, I'm looking at the, what's it called? Okay, the site, the site plan for the office building, that's the only one we got. It looks like we have another half of the hall in that building also. Does that make sense? We have, yeah. In the main, in the main building, not in the, in the Hassan Hall that you proposed, in the real school building.
The school, I'm sorry. What was the question regarding the school?
I'm wondering if the basement, are you planning to do another Hassan Hall as well? It's 40.
No.
More than 30,000 square feet in total.
Or not.
I think they testified only there's one 12,000 multipurpose room, that's it. Is that correct?
That's in the.
Hi, we're not. There's one, there's one. There's no two.
Do you understand my suspicion, though, correct?
I understand your question, understand why I'm thinking that. The answer is no, we're not, and we're willing to put that on the record. One only.
And how are we gonna prevent if there's an urgent need?
You asked me if we're doing it. The answer is no. I'm going to, on the record, it's condition of approval. It's not being used for that.
I know the chairman wasn't happy with the, with the school bus circulation. I think it's funny at minimum and weird and stinky on the other way. The way you figure out the buses going in and out, that's very, very weird. And I don't think it's workable. I don't think any other school has it this way, and it works.
Again, it's just showing the max capacity.
Scott Kendall, we're gonna address any traffic or circulation issues.
And Mr. Pfeffer, Mr. Pfeffer, I'm, I'm, I'm almost getting there.
Yeah, in just response to the circulation, let's remember, this is at the end of a street. It's not as if it's a true street and there's co-mingling with other traffic at where the schools are located. And as the plan presented by New Line shows, there's the opportunity, when we have maximum busloads, to accommodate all the buses. It's not to say that that would be the way it would occur on a daily basis, but the plan has been designed to accommodate that situation. Because typically, we would look for buses, just as Ally is sketching on there, to come in the driveway, make a left, and then make another left. But should there be such occasions where we have more than.
Friday afternoon.
We have additional storage on site.
Yeah, the problem with that is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the problem with that is that if if we do have buses coming in right away, left, and making the left in front of the school, where staff is gonna wanna come in and they're gonna try to park in there, we have buses staggered on Lewin or park across the street and then walk, walk across Lewin in between school buses and other cars. I don't think that's a safe situation. I think it's, and the same thing for the wedding hall. If we're gonna have, if we're gonna have people park across the street and walk into the wedding hall between cars going in and out, I think it's a very dangerous situation.
My understanding is the wedding hall would be at nighttime when schools are not in session, so that we don't have that conflict of movements.
Still having cars going in and out and crossing the street.
And again, and then this situation would really be only during, for dismissal. Generally, the way the buses are scheduled for the arrival in the morning, I wouldn't expect them to circulate through the lot as shown on the plan.
Yeah, Mr. Kendall, I think the building is 60,000 square feet?
Yeah, that's the footprint, correct.
Okay, you have a lot of students in that. You're gonna be using that whole parking lot for buses. You're not gonna have four or five buses on 60,000 square feet.
But again, they arrive over a period of time, is what I'm trying to say. And that's for the morning arrivals. For dismissal, there may be the need to have them stack on the site on that, I'll say, Ring Road of the parking lot. But again.
You're gonna have them stacked in, you're gonna have them stacked in there, waiting for dismissal, starting at 2:30 until about 4 o'clock, while staff is trying to get out of the parking lot and kids trying to get onto the school buses. I, you don't even have sidewalk on that side of the street in case the school bus wants to load up as soon as you make a left, as soon as you make the right. You don't even have sidewalk in that entire area. For safety's sake, they're gonna walk through the car.
No, they're not.
Dismissal schedule for 5:00 PM.
Uh, hi, the only, the only way they can do it, the buses have to wait. And when they pull up in front of the bu, the building, that's when they load. They're not gonna be walking through the parking lot. That's dangerous.
Chairman, you know.
I was, uh, Mr. Sable, I'm sorry for trapping you just, I was just asked to mention, the purpose why we're showing all the buses stacked to capacity is specifically to avoid and to alleviate the problem of the neighbors. We have full capacity to store all the buses onsite out of the street, specifically to avoid, if you will, bothering or interfering with their, with activities and operations of the neighbors.
You're not gonna have any buses staggered on the main streets. It'll be all off-street.
Correct.
That is very.
Time, I just counted all the buses. It's about 23. I think a school bus has about 50 kids per bus. So if I'm doing my math right, that is about. Yeah, but how many, how many, that's a lot of kids. That's a lot of kids you're gonna be able to stack.
This is working scenario. It's not gonna happen. This is like, this is like way, 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 and only just to store all the buses off-site to avoid having any conflict with any neighbors.
Or when you rent out the floor for another school. Let's take it until then.
Hi, there's 1,200 kids. They have capacity for 1,200 kids in that stack. That's a lot of kids.
That's not a lot, for the shape, that's not a lot.
Oh, sounds like a lot.
So, and we don't even have a pedestrian walkway for the kids to get off the buses.
Mr. Fager has so many buses.
The school is full.
Mr. Chairman, there should not be a debate between the witnesses and the board member. If the board wants to ask questions, you ask questions. If the board wants to deliberate, deliberate. But we can't, we can't go back and forth with the witnesses, with the board's comments unless it's.
Mr. Sable asked the questions, no more.
Mr. Jackson, I'm perfectly okay with this. We need to get answers, and this is the way of getting answers. We need to build schools, and this is the way of getting, getting schools into town. I think, I don't see the problem with having this conversation.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted.
Okay, Mr. Sable, I, Mr. Fager has, I'm sure, 30 buses showing up. I think, from one thing, it's a good thing that we don't have the buses going on Summers, on Lewin, on James Street. They're all gonna be built, if you have 30 buses, you could get them all on the property. And the way it should work, as they pull up in front of the building, they load up and they leave one at a time.
Yeah. Right. I don't know if they're gonna wait, I don't know, 15 buses full of kids are gonna wait to arrive in front of the building to unload. My point is that I think we should make a sidewalk around that parking lot, so if the bus decides to drop off a kid when it's too cold or too hot, so the kids don't have to wait another 10 minutes to arrive a, to a gate, as they say, like in an airport to unload.
Mr. Orbach, are you okay with making an interior?
We're definitely willing to explore it under resolution compliance. If we can fit it, we'll be happy to put it on a sidewalk on the, behind the asphalt.
Why should we not, why should we be able to put a? Why shouldn't we be able to put a four-feet sidewalk?
Chairman, can I just clarify?
One at a time, one at a time.
If you look at the site plan, there's sidewalks along the east side of the building and along the north side. So we have two sides of the building. We have full-width sidewalks. So it can accommodate eight to nine buses, the way we have it designed.
I'm putting next to where do you have the buses set up now?
Mr. Scott, you have eight, nine buses who could pull up at one time and all load with sidewalks.
Correct.
Okay. I don't think a school, even a big school, could fill up more than nine buses at one time. You can't get out of the door fast enough to go onto the bus.
Through the chair.
It'll also help.
One, Mr. Sable. Mr. Sable finished.
That sidewalk over there will also help for wedding hall, when cars park over there, they can walk safely and have it almost connect to the other side of the street. So you don't have to walk through the parking lot.
Mr. Orbach said that he would do it in resolution plans. He agreed to do it.
He's gonna try. That doesn't mean not. I mean, he's gonna try, and he says he tried, and it's gonna be good.
Ally, can you please open up the plan, Ally? I wanna look at it right now, and I'll tell you right now if I could do it or not. I apologize, Ally.
While you guys do that, can I just give Mr. Sable a little information, how we got to these numbers and why we, why we designed it this way? This is Josh.
And I know you worked very hard on it.
No, I don't know my work. Okay, one at a time. Mr. Schmuckler. Just the reason, we looked at, this is not like, this is not like, we're not drawing here in space. We actually looked at the current school, which exists today, which is a very large school. And we said, okay, how much, how many bus stackings, how many buses do they have for stacking right now? And we went about double what they currently have today. So as Scott pointed out, you could fit five or six buses just in front of the building facing east, and then to the side of the building facing north, you have space for another three buses. That's an active loading, seven, eight, nine, 10 buses, active loading at all times. We also added a sidewalk that's also partially next between the pool and those, and those driving, those parking spots. So if we have to restripe those and call that, let's say overflow parking, or get rid of, you know, 10 spots and have more loading zone area, you have space for more parking. Very rarely will you ever get more than 10, 11 buses at one second loading, unloading. They come, they go, especially in the morning when they drop off. They drop off and then they leave. Bigger time is a Friday or sometime when there's an early dismissal in a larger part of the school.
Friday, you could have all 30 buses there at the same time.
And this is more stacking than any school probably in Lakewood besides maybe Lakewood during the main, because they have the whole loop around the whole entire building. This is a tremendous stacking.
And I agree with you. Stacking is off, off-site. It's on the side. It's not on the street, which I think is beneficial.
But we expect to load 10 buses at a time, which is a tremendous amount to load at one time.
And Mr. Sable, I looked at the plan. Mr. Sable, I looked at the plan, and yes, we can put a four-foot walkway around the perimeter interior walkway, yes.
Okay, so that solves that issue.
So Ally, can you, Ally, can you show that on, just make sure we're on the same page?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Tell me, tell me again where that is going.
I'm assuming connecting the current side of the building till the road.
Yes, continue over there, Ally, that's correct. And then head down towards Lewin, if you will. Yep, correct. Thank you.
And go over. Can we go back up till the end of the street? So we'll connect for Hassan Hall, people can walk across.
I can't go across, she, I can connect to the existing.
Right.
I could continue the loop, the way Ally has it, yes.
Thank you very much. What, if, if and when Lewin, that part of, well, that part of Lewin is not gonna get.
It's not gonna make it. It's a 20-foot drop. It's not possible. It's not nowhere.
What?
Go to nowhere.
It's a 20-foot drop.
No, my question is, maybe we can have the township dedicate that to the school? Is there any way we can?
It's a, it's a, it's a ski jump.
I can't hear nothing. What, what do you mean?
It doesn't matter. It's got a 20-foot drop. It's unusable.
Oh, that, that street, Lewin Avenue has.
Yeah, that's what I was asking earlier. Why don't we just square off the road and then take a left further down? And Mr. Schmuckler said, can't do it, because we're looking at a two-dimensional map. And three-dimensionally, the thing drops 20 feet, so it's not practical.
If you go to the grading plan, you'd see that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one more, from, from, from Lewin Avenue on the, what is it, south side of the building, can we connect sidewalk as well?
Yeah, we'll get some sort of connection through with some stripe, some, pave, stripe the pavement for.
What's the problem of putting concrete sidewalk there? We're gonna have a lot of kids walking here. No question about it.
That's why I just said we'll have it, and we'll have, also, when we go through pavement to drive aisles, we'll stripe it as well. It's no.
Okay. Can we do, can we do a concrete, please? Regular sidewalk from Lewin to the school?
I, we have no problem.
We'll go the street.
In the street, we'll actually, we stripe usually, like a striping for.
Across the street. Not the street. In the, in the property, in the property, as soon as you come up, walking up north towards the building, on the right, on the left side, from the street till the school.
Correct. What we would do normally is we'd sidewalk areas up, like there are grass or off the drive aisles, and anything that's crossing a drive aisle typically will paint it, so pedestrians, pedestrians have a safe way of crossing the drive aisle.
No, it's not crossing a driveway. You're actually not crossing nothing.
So we need to see the plan again, Ally, if you don't mind going back.
I think it's a small area will make a big difference.
Do you mean like, like only to the south side? Behind the garbage?
Yeah.
South is over here.
No, 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 the, on the school building.
He means right behind the garbage. We'll get it, we'll get a pedestrian clear access from the road to the school.
Okay.
I'm talking about the, Ally, the school building.
The school building?
That's, that's the wedding hall, I believe.
Oh, up here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the south side.
Right there.
Somewhere connected to the building.
Yep.
Have room, Mr. Schmuckler? Okay, thank you.
Will, will the applicant agree to keep the wedding hall and the school under the same ownership, so he doesn't sell part of it away? Will, will the applicant agree to keep the wedding hall and the school on, under the same ownership, so he doesn't sell part of it away?
Time, you can't, you can't, you can't do that. That's.
I can request, and they can say no, but I can request.
But, but once you request it, and they don't sell.
If it's, if it's one site plan approval, that was Mr. Jackson's point, they need to stay together. So you'd think there should be something that.
But it's two tax laws, Ally.
But it's, but it, but, but they're not designed individually with parking provided separately and drainage provided separately for each individual lot.
That's one of my, can I, Chairman, may I be heard of?
Yes. Yes, we'll read that one. Okay, one at a time, Mr. Jackson, please.
That's what my concern was about this with the road dividing, that it would be very conducive to being sold off and operated as two separate entities. When this came into plan review, the applicant assured us that they would make their approval contingent upon the road being vacated and the sites being consolidated.
Okay.
Our, Mr. Schmuckler both assured me of that, and, and was what the agreement was, why wouldn't we go forward? So, you know, that, that was of that problem, Mr. Sable. If, if the lots, if this, if this was contingent as they assured me it would be, upon the governing body vacating the road and the lots being consolidated, that's how and why I said it could proceed individually. But when.
That was when we were told the only way to go forward legally is to do two separate applications or two.
Well, the board, the board can make that as a matter of policy, so.
If I, if I could just chime in.
Okay.
Well, one of the points is that in the event, uh, one of these buildings does get sold, which that's not the intent here in any way, shape, or form, we would have to meet the zoning requirements for that building on its own, for example, parking. So that would say, if, if we didn't have the right amount of parking, then we wouldn't have a, a CO.
But a realtor is not gonna stop the sale. They're not gonna go back and check site requirements.
CO, or, or a CCO, and any change of use would have to either come before the board and/or get a zoning permit from the zoning officer to indicate that the amount, right amount of parking is there, but the use is permitted.
Yeah, I understand the only issue. Mr. Jackson.
And members of the board, I mean, the bottom line is, if, if you don't like it, don't approve it. If you think there's a chance sold off and it does violence to the parking, as, you know.
Mr. Jackson, they cannot sell it all. It's one big parcel, even though there's a road in it. They need to.
That, that's not true. They're separate lots and blocks.
They can't sell. They don't have parking then. Then they, then the.
Mr. Chairman, we could, we could satisfy.
One, one at a time, one at a time. Mr. Mr. Brian, you wanted to say something?
We could satisfy Mr. Sable's comments by providing a cross-access easement between the two lots. So that it, it accommodates the parking the same as it always been. And I'm sure Adam could do a document. It would be viewed as part of resolution compliance that would accomplish the same thing as not being able to sell off the property.
Adam, are you okay with that? Mr. Fef, are you okay with that? What?
Yes.
There's a, there's a practical problem with that, though. Mr. Chairman, there's a practical problem with that, that the board should be aware of, that then you would have different owners, and they're not necessarily going to cooperate with each other. They'd have cross-access and the right to park on either side, but they're not gonna coordinate the timing and everything as if they would under one ownership. So that, you know, what the board does, it's the board's discretion. I just wanna point.
Yeah, so let me go back to my question.
Point out, that's an enforcement issue for a hypothetical down the line that, that this, this board doesn't have the authority to anyway. It would have to be addressed in, um, outside of this, outside of this board.
Mr. Fef, how, how is it possible for this applicant to ever sell off the property? He wouldn't have an operating school. He's building a school over here. Is that not?
There was no intention.
Robert Canary, you wanna speak?
Mr. Mar, just on this issue, I can speak on this issue.
Okay, well, you have to be a firm, Robert Canary.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we have to kick, this is just taking, you know, everybody's just taking potshots from wherever you, they have to be recognized through the chair, the board asks questions.
I just recognize, yes, be a firm. Robert Canary.
Robert Canary, do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth, that whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Thank you. And, and, you know, Mr. Chairman, we're also breaking down into, we have Mr. Schmuckler making legal arguments. We have Mr. Flannery making arguments. The, the arguments should be made from Mr. Fef as the attorney for the applicant. Everyone shouldn't just chime in with debating the issues.
I, I know, but we did this at the beginning of the, of the meeting, and the board had no opposition on going forward as one property.
Just to be clear also. I mean, the pitfalls are, are being revealed now as we go through it, but that, but.
Okay, let, let, let Robert Canary speak, please.
I'm not gonna speak in any legal position, just on a fact. As you know, I'm running schools for, way, a little north of thirty-six years in Lakewood. And obviously, we don't intend to sell any schools. We run schools for, to serve the children of the community. And this is one big property, and this boys' division on one side, a girls' high school on the other side, and it's staying one owner. We never sell parcels. I'm just, this is just being, I'm sorry to say, just being ridiculous. Like, like, like Mr., Mr. John Jackson said before, just taking potshots, be ridic, but, but, it's one property, it's one school, and we, we don't tend to break anything up, and it's one application. I just, I just wanna be clear on this. Never has, has it been, I've sold a school, or split a school, or this all just really, really, I'm sorry to say, just being ridiculous. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Fef, based on that representation.
One at a time, one at a time, please. Are you finished, Robert Canary?
Based on that representation, excuse me, would, Mr. Fef, would your, would your client do a deed restriction prohibiting the, uh, separate ownership between the two parcels?
No, I, I, my, my opinion always on deed restrictions, I'm against them, because as, as Jackson, as you've always indicated, the only way we could, we could take away a deed restriction is a, is a court, and that, that's not really appropriate here. Mr. Canary.
Mr. Fef, let me ask you a question.
But the representation was that these were going to be combined with the street vacate. It was gonna be combined with one parcel, and you were seeking one application. The whole theory of this was that it was one lot.
Mr. Fef, could, could you agree that if you ever wanna sell off this property, you have to come back to the board to get approval? Because to make sure that you have enough parking?
Robert, do you have any objections to coming back before the board?
No objection, no, no problem at all, no problem at all.
Mr. Jackson, we would agree as a condition of approval that should these properties ever be separate under separate ownership, we would come back before the board to address any.
Right, and, and it would violate the site plan approval, because they're.
We have to get a new site.
We agree to that. We agree to that. I just, I just wanna mention one very important point. I, I think Mr. Schmuckler alluded to it. I just, Mr. Santos, our neighbor's still listening. I just wanna mention to him, I, I do, we, I do very concerned about our neighbors, and I would like to meet him personally afterwards and discuss it with him, but I just, I do wanna tell him that a big part of the problem that he's having right now with the backup on Summer Review, I think will be alleviated a great deal if this parkland is built with the stacking of the buses that, and I think by now, Mr. Sable understands what, what the logic behind it is. I don't know if Mr. Sable ever ran schools before, but I do run schools. And the, the way the buses are being stacked is tremendous, tremendous benefit for the neighbor, that there won't be any backup going back to, to Summer Review. And, uh, again, the, the, another, another concern Mr. Santos had is the cars pulling in. We do expect, once the building is up, when they take that stars and move it to a different location, that trailer is, is a temporary trailer, it will be moved away. I do think that a big problem that he's having with backing up his docks will be alleviated if this building is up.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank everybody for understanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm closing to the public. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to make you crazy, but I, we had a, the, Mr. Orbach had a question, had a comment about opening up the Terrace River. Can you double-check what he meant? I, I don't think I understand what that.
I received a public comment via email on that as well.
So can we please double-check that? Maybe we can open it permanent? Is there any way we can open it normal, so have a normal access for cars and buses? Not everybody's getting squashed down Lewin Avenue? Is that an idea?
I, I don't know, because the Terrace River has a, has a wedding over there. You can't have another wedding hall coming in to the same place.
Why not?
Okay, where is Mr. Orbach still here?
If we provide private sidewalks and light, why not?
Yeah, Mr. Orbach. This, this, it's not, it's not, we can't make.
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Orbach, do you wanna answer to his question? Did you hear what he said?
No, I apologize. What was the question?
Following up on Mr. Stern's gold medal that he wanted to give you about opening up the Terrace River.
Yes, no, there's, there's no access to both Lewin and Summer. There, there is a twenty-foot drop between the, between these two properties. What I'm saying was, the basement, the first floor, if you will, on the, the, is a, is a ground-level access off of, off of Summer Avenue, the, the, the top floor is ground-level access off of Lewin Avenue. So I was suggesting was, is that the heavier traffic used from the parents will direct those, we will, we will relocate them once the building is done to, to use Summer Avenue property in order to avoid having the vehicles, the vehicles backing up off of Lewin Avenue. Have the, the, our preschool division, which comes by, excuse me, the elementary school, which comes with, with buses, they will enter off of Lewin Avenue, which will decrease the amount of vehicle, but there cannot be any vehicle access because it's a twenty-foot drop between the actual, the actual two properties.
Okay, thank you.
And the applicant, Mr. Canary, just agreed to remove the trailers once the building stands. Can we put a parking lot of? Can we put in a parking lot over there, so eliminate cars from going across the street? Parking closes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Which trailers?
On the lot.
Stop, 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 everybody.
Well, once the stars is moved away, additional parking. Once the stars is moved away, it'll become additional parking, yes.
Okay. Okay, please, one at a time. We can't have a record whenever it's talking. Okay. Uh, Ally, I saw you had one more public comment from Mr. Zions. And I close it a little public, but I'll, I'll read it. I'll, I'll let you read it.
I believe Mr. Ourback was responding to this. Mr. Zions says, please clarify the easement to Summer Avenue. Do I understand the wedding hall will have access to both Lewin and Summer Avenue through a Terrace River, Rivka parking lot? When will this access road be paved immediately or only later? Like I said, I believe Mr. Ourback addressed that already.
Okay, thank you. I'm closing it to the public, and I would ask for a motion on this application.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, but I'm gonna need Mr. Ourback's help to actually articulate this.
Mr. Orbach. He's on the phone there.
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Sorry, Bruce. Yes.
Okay, so the, the motion would be, we, excuse me?
Yeah, Mr. Sable wants to say something.
I, I wrote down a couple of comments, so before you make your final motion, I'll add you, and you'll let me know if this is part of your motion.
No problem. You, you could second it and add to it, if you.
Yeah, no, this, we'll make this a collaborative process, because a lot going on here. So I'm, I'm gonna move that we approve the, the application. We're gonna add the fencing requested by the paving company next door. And then we're gonna put in the sidewalks as articulated by Mr. Sable. But this is where I need your help, Mr. Ourback. We're, we're going to provide, after the buildings are built, we're going to do what? To give access to your gold medal idea. Articulate that.
I'm moving over stars.
Okay, so basically, okay, so let me just explain. There's two divisions. There's Stars right now is in the, is in the modular building, which was going to be proposed to be relocated to the, to the right of the wedding hall. The preschool division was going to be in the basement or the first floor, if you will, and through Summer Avenue. So my suggestion was, and we're okay with that, once the building is complete, and we have, we have everything done, and we will relocate Stars to the basement, to the ground level, of which their vehicles will enter off of Summer Avenue. And the preschool division, which, excuse me, the, the, they will come with, with buses off of Lewin Avenue.
And the, okay, so I guess, you know, Team Lakewood, you're gonna have to memorialize that in the resolution compliance with the applicant's professionals. Um, I can't articulate that very specifically, but that they will.
Mr. Ourback.
One at a time. Ally, do you have it correctly, what's gonna be added to the?
No. Mr. Ourback is referencing, I'm sorry, Abe, is referencing cars coming on Summer Avenue, which is not part of this application, so I'm not really sure. And, and I don't write the conclusions, so it's John who needs to have this clear.
Mr. Ourback, could you clarify?
Sure. There's an existing, there is an existing early intervention Stars, which is located right now in those modular building, which we are proposing to relocate to the immediate right, which is off of Lewin Avenue, which one of the neighbors had, has suggested, had requested, that that is going to create a tremendous traffic with all the parents, which he has now. In addition, there's going to be a elementary school division on the first floor of, of the, of banquet multipurpose hall, if you will, which that first floor, the vehicles, the way to access that off, is off of the back of the existing parking lot of the existing site, which enters off of Summer Avenue. So my suggestion was, was to flip it and put the Stars, which creates more vehicles to enter off of Summer Avenue, and just move the elementary school division upstairs to the modular building, which has much less vehicle traffic. And I can explain that to you throughout the resolution if I'm not clear, but I, I'm trying to be as clear as possible.
It looks like John walked away. John, is that clear for you in preparing the resolution?
We lost him?
I don't, he walked away in the middle of you talking.
Or either Adam, or he synthesized that and squished that down into a clarity tape.
I'm on a different, uh.
Oh, here's that.
I'm still here.
Okay, do you understand what Mr. Orbach said to put into the resolution?
Yeah.
That would, that, okay, thank you. And, and, Mr. Stern, that was part of your motion?
Yes.
You added to your motion. Mr. Sable, are you finished, Mr. Stern?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
I just, I think Mr., um.
Sable would like to add something.
Mr. Stern missed the portion about adding the no-through traffic on the Excel property that is off of Lewin.
Okay.
That was a condition as well, please.
Mr. Stern, do you add that to your motion? He froze over there.
He froze. Well, Mr. Sable can reference that if he.
Could you just clarify? I didn't understand that.
Uh, Mr. Pizzati had requested that you, that you provide no-through-traffic signs on Lewin Avenue to the roadway that goes around behind his building, which is not a public roadway. I thought, I believe Mr. Flannery had agreed to that during his testimony.
Okay, so Mr. Stern, are you there? He's not there. Hold on, I need him to be back on, because he made the motion.
At a, like, there he comes. Here he, oh, he's got a, like, a caution sign on his.
What does that mean? What does that mean? Okay, Mr. Stern, you heard what Ally added?
No, my power, my power, my power went out, so if there's something you need me to re-listen to, I apologize.
Mr. Pizzati had requested, actually, I believe Mr. Flannery had either proposed or agreed to no-through-traffic signs on Lewin Avenue to the rear area of that existing warehouse building that's currently being used as a cut-through by people trying to leave the school.
And the applicant was okay with that?
Yes, just wanted to reiterate it. Thank you.
I don't recall agreeing to that, but if it's.
I, I apologize.
Yeah, if it's putting up a sign, I'm sure the applicant has no problem putting up a sign.
Okay, Mr. Stern, is that part of your motion?
Yeah, now it is.
Okay, good. Now let's get to Mr. Sable. Do you wanna add anything before you second the motion?
Yes, we wanna double, double, re-irritate the, uh, ownership and the cross-access easement. That it can be one, cross-access easement.
They, they, they agree to it?
Yep, and the road's gonna be a vacated railroad, uh, that has to be in condition as well. I believe we agree to that. That railroad is vacated? No?
No.
I see not over the head.
No, we, we never, we never proposed vacating railroad. We said we would request a vacation from the township committee, and we would go by their determination.
And if it doesn't get.
On Lewin. Yeah, railroad, I, I don't, I don't think it would be appropriate to vacate. We don't need to vacate it. Road was never part of the discussion. It was a street. Lewin, yes.
Lewin, Lewin.
And we also. Yes, a portion of Lewin. We don't want that as a condition of approval, though, because if the township determines that it shouldn't be, for whatever reason, and, and they go through all their departments, and they're, you know, there may be some reason they don't want to. We don't want that to be a condition. The condition would be that we, we, we request it.
Okay, but regardless, you're giving, regardless, you're giving the cross-access easement.
Yes.
Right, and we wanna make sure that it's only one hall. The building of the school is not gonna be rented out, na fa b' mitzvah, na fa sheba broches. It's, it's not gonna be a hall. Um, one last thing, the trailer we discussed. Oh, Scott Kennel said a traffic signal on Lewin. Who is putting that traffic signal in?
I was driving while. It's in the county, they said, no?
The county would put it in as part of our approval. We'll have to pay our fair share.
But this is for sure that they're gonna do it? But this is a confirmation that they're gonna do it? Or they can deny it?
We, we can't make the county do anything, but, uh, it, it, Scott. We can't make the county do anything, but Scott Kennel testified how that's the appropriate place for a light, and the county engineer, when he reviews the application, if he determines it's needed, he will require us to pay our fair share, and we're happy to pay our fair share for that traffic.
Okay.
Can we write a letter to them, can we write the planning board, can we write a letter to the county begging for one?
I think the applicant writes the letter, no?
Dino, we could do something different, can we ask the planning board secretary to be so kind to write a letter? Encouraging it?
I don't know, Ali, you have a problem writing?
I think.
Mr. Jackson? If that's one?
The township should do that, if we're gonna do.
We could make that, I'm sorry, Mr. Stern.
No, go ahead.
We could make that request on behalf of the board, but, I mean, anyone could request the county to do anything. We can make it a condition of our approval, that they see that.
I don't think we're making it a condition, but we do wanna put the request in.
John, we have an alignment of interests, the school would want this too, so we don't have to mandate them to do anything.
Okay, so, Mr. Sable, is that, you seconded, is that it?
With the recommendation to the county, yeah.
Well, okay, thank you. Ali, you have everything, right? Okay, thank you, and roll call, please.
Sure, you want to go?
Ali?
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Garfield. He might need to be on you to thank you. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yeah.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We only have, we only have eight minutes left, which we're gonna have to, I think, Spruce Street. And the next two applications will have to be pushed off the next meeting.
Only one.
What?
Only one afterwards, only number six, number seven is ready to push off.
Five and six.
Yeah, five also.
And five is a contested application. Which is a issue, that's gonna be, that's gonna be involved.
Okay, Ali, when are we pushing number five or six?
I recommend both be carried to June twenty-nine.
Okay.
Which is two weeks from today.
Okay, so, Mr. Jackson, can you make that announcement, please?
Thank you, members of the public, the vice number five on tonight's calendar, SD twenty-four eighty-one, three and one, Spruce Street LLC, as well as number six on tonight's calendar, SP twenty-four sixteen, four hundred Lewin LLC, have both been adjourned and will be heard on, what was the date, Ali, June?
June twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Two thousand twenty-one, six o'clock, in this virtual format, there will be no further notices.
Okay, Mr. Gazarovski, if he's there.
What's that? On twenty-four eighteen, I think you said twenty-four sixteen, just clarify, number six is twenty-four eighteen.
Number six on tonight's calendar, number twenty-four is eighteen.
Thank you so much. I apologize, to clarify, item five is being carried, correct?
Correct, yes.
Five and six.
Is the twenty-ninth good for you? Mr. Gazarovski?
I'm here, my matters being adjourned?
To the twenty-ninth.
To the twenty-ninth.
Okay, thank you so much.
Is that thing good for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the courtesy.
Okay. Okay, approval of minutes, you have any minutes? Anybody wanna move the minutes?
Minutes and bills.
Moved, second, all in favor?
All right.
Ali wants to make sure before we leave that we take care of the bills, right?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to pay the bills? Move, second, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, happy delayed birthday.
Okay, thank you.
From last week, you missed opportunity.
Okay, that's why I left early. Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm asking everybody again, I spoke to the mayor this week, and he told me he hopes within a month to open up regular meetings. I would ask everybody to hold out another month.